Thank you. The time is 4:07 on July 7, 2020. If we can all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I would like to do the inauguration of oath for the re-elected board members Heather Welch and Alan Barone. Heather Welch is not with us today. She did do the oath of office on Friday, and Tom Bon Jovi was the witness for that. I would like to ask Alan Barone, once again, congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Alan Barone,
I, Alan Barone,
do solemnly swear that I will support
Do solemnly swear that I support
the Constitution of the United States of America
Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the United States of New York
and the Constitution of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the position of school board member
the duties of the position of school board member
of the Highland Central School District
of the Highland Central School District
to which I am now assigned
to which I am now assigned
for the term of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
For the term of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Thank you, Alan, and congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Okay. At this point, I would like to ask for nominations for board presidents for the 2020-2021 school year. Any nominations, please? Second by Ed. Are there any other nominations for board president? Okay, all those in favor for Alan Barone as board president, please say aye.
Aye.
Those not in agreement? Okay, congratulations, Alan. You have been appointed as the board president. And for the six, they are vote.
Do you want to do yours after you do the votes?
We don't need to do a vote for board president?
No.
Okay, we have it in the past. I wasn't too sure. So we'll go ahead and we'll do the oath for the board president, and Alan Barone will ask for nominations for the vice president. I'm just gonna have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Alan Barone, do solemnly swear
I, Alan Barone, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the States of New York
and the Constitution of the States of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the position of board president
the duties of the position of board president
for the Highland Central School District
for the Highland Central School District
for the school year 2020-2021.
for the school year 2020-2021.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations again, Alan.
Before I move on to ask for nominations for board president, I just want to thank the board for being able to serve and represent this school board and this school district in the faith that you've had for me over the last bunch of years. And I appreciate that. And hopefully this year we can move forward into bigger and greater things for our school. So, thank you. I now ask for nominations for the office of vice president for the Highland Central School District. I can nominate Heather Welch. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other nomination? I mean Heather Welch is not here. Do we need another? Another she'll accept. I do not. So, moving forward, so Heather has been nominated. There's no other nomination. Okay. Nomination made by Mike, second by Sue for Heather Welch as president of the 12th Board of Education. Okay. Moving on, this is our reorganization meeting. We have one go over for appointments. And after we do our reorg meeting, we will enter into our regular meeting. We will go again with that. So, appointment of district officers to be resolved for Board of Education on the recommendation of superintendent schools to be following district officers. District clerk Lisa Anderson Diggs, cited 7,500. District treasurer Karen Van Amber, contractual. School tax collector Marcie Anne Smith, cited 4,500. Internal claim auditor Michelle McGrath, cited $5,000. Deputy treasurer Fallon Winecooke, contractual. Deputy claim boarder Carly James. Have a motion, please. Motion by Ed, second. Second by Camille. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Go carry. Other appointments to be resolved for Board of Education on the recommendation of superintendent schools to be following appointments. School physician, movement health, school attorney. Thomas Johann Waxman Pedro Mail. All of these. External auditor. Non-dominio. External auditor, trainee chief cruiser CDA. Director's access officer Karen Dudley Living. Specialist designated agent Dr. Michael Alor. Purchasing agent recent collector. Central treasurer for the curriculum activity account Karen Van Amber. Title seven, title nine compliance officer Sarah W. Leonard and Patrick Boyd. 403B third-party administrator, the Omni Group. Financial software systems administrator Karen Van Amber. Alternate financial software system administrator Thomas Bon Jovi. DA slash 504 compliance officer Patrick Boyd. Evans officer Patrick Boyd. Redwood secret officer Patrick Boyd. McKinney Mendel, layton, Elizabeth Selenantray. Medicare renewal contract management, library group business operations incorporated. And motion, please. Motion by Sue, second by Camille. All those in favor? Close. Go carry. Designations recommend the board designate the following bench at the public work for 2020-2021 school year. Bank of Manhattan, Bank of America Bank, Citizens Bank, ED Bank North. David Morgan Chase, New York Liquid Asset Fund, and Bank of America. I'll do these, hold these declarations, and then we'll take the motion to accept the role of the board. So, I have another second. Recommend the board not designate names to follow in dates. Time for the Board of Education meeting, which will be held in Wardroom, June 32. At the high school, depending on the location, which is given, posted on the district website by certified committee date. We have July 7. We have August 4th. We have August 18. September 15. September 22. October 6. October 20. November 10. December 8. January 12. February 9. March 2nd. March 16. June 7. From 1st and 4th, May 18. June 8. Recommend the board designate the district's official newspaper, the Kids' Journal. District announcements may also be printed in the following newspapers. Nine, the newspaper of the Hudson Valley. Recommend the Board of Education president, as we adore the appointing of the part of the hearing officer, to adapt the Board of Education. And I have a motion to accept these delegations, recommendations. Motion by Mike, second by Camille. Any discussion? All those in favor? Close. Go carry. Authorization, certified payroll. Recommend the board authorize superintendent certified payroll and goodness of administrators to serve in his absence. We'll take authorization through why, if there's one block and can do it, or have a motion to do that. Conferences, conventions, workshop, recommended, superintendent school takes action, and administrators, teacher requests, and conferences, convention, and workshop within the 2021 school budget for three. Petty cash. Recommend the school establishes. Recommend the board establishes petty cash fund in the mass facility, specifically facilities, due funds for 2021 school years followed. High school, $100. High school main office, the East Santiago. Middle school, $100. Middle school main office, Jamie Valentino. Elementary school, $100. Elementary main office, Elise Flossing. Transportation, Norman Amber, $100. Henry Amberg. Food services, $100. Mary Ann Listagro. Signature. Recommend the board designate Fallon Winecooke, district treasurer, deputy treasurer, Karen Van Amber, district treasurer, authorized signatories on checks and draws as necessary for following accounts. One signature is required. Multiple fund account, special aid program fund, capital fund, slash debt service slash payroll account, tax collection slash checking slash school food services fund. Designation chief faculty advisor, extracurricular activity fund. Recommend the board designate chief faculty advisor, wealthy principal. Extracurricular activity fund, central treasurer Karen Van Amber. Karen Van Amber will also be authorized signature on checks and draws as necessary for extracurricular activity funds for the high school and middle school. One signature is required. Budget transfer. Recommend the board authorizes the superintendent school or the board designate to transfer 200 funds within the functional levels for family purchasing, instruction, transportation of budget as required, board approval. For the also given, to transfer up to $10,000 between functional levels of budget for separate case of emergency, in which case the superintendent will notify the board at the next boarding. Anticipation notes. Recommend the Board of Education, Highland Central School District, as follows. Section one, subject to the provisions of the local financial law, power that authorizes issuance of sales from time to time, revenue anticipation notes, Highland Central School District, also handling New York, fully renewed thereof. In anticipation, the received state aid, beginning to during any fiscal year of said school district, is hereby designated, delegated to the president of Board of Education, chief fiscal officer. Such note shall be such term, form, and content shall be sold in such manner that may be determined by said president of Board of Education. Still to the local financial law. The amount of the revenue anticipated note shall now not exceed 2.5 billion dollars. Section two, this resolution issue shall take effect immediately. Grants. Recommend the superintendent or designate authorized supply for grants and aid, state and federal, and local independent grants. CSE, CPSA. Recommend the board authorize the superintendent schools and/or the board president to execute all contracts and agreements to provide services to students with special needs and plus above CSE CPSA student. As recommended by a committee of CSE CPSA, in the case of emergency, the superintendent has the power to execute contracts and agreements in event CSE CPSA cannot convene. Okay. Act of the eye. Can I look for a motion to accept those authorizations? Motion by Camille, second by Ed. All those in favor? Go carry. Official undertakings. Recommend the board authorize the provision of employees to Thomas and Sheriff's Department to amount to eight. All employees, $1 million. District treasurer, district tax collector, internal claim boarder, deputy claim boarder, deputy treasurer, extra class activity treasurer, district clerk, all $1 million. I have a motion to accept the official undertaking. Motion by Mike, second by Tom. Discussion. All in favor? Close. Go carry. Color items. We'll take color items from page through N. Moving right on. Policy manual. Be resolved at the Board of Education, read out all policies in the Highland Central School District policy manual, effective as of June 30, 2020, and at June 7, 2020, reorganization meeting. Mileage reimbursement. Recommend the board establishes the mileage reimbursement rate at the IRS IRS rate 57.5 cents per mile. Subcommittee and layton. Recommend the establishment, scheme, support, subcommittees, and layton as follows for the 2020-21 school year. Voting committee, and I'll let you know who was on previous committee. For voting committee, this is Heather Welch, Tom Miller, and Sue Gilmore. The three of you still like to remain on that committee? Okay, so Heather Welch, Tom Miller, and Sue Gilmore. Support services committee. Currently, this year is myself, Ed, Lou Myler, and Tom Miller. And Tom, if you'd like to remain on that committee. Does anyone else like to? Does anyone want to put that committee? I could all remain on, or so. Okay, so, myself, Ed, and Tom. Negotiations, if required, currently for HDA, we have Sue Gilmore, Heather Welch, Camille. But I don't think we have any contracts expiring this year.
No, unless we have the
Unless it's a special situation.
Yeah.
A forgiveness statute. Well, still, that's just a committee, I mean.
Okay.
I need it for So, we go three. Floyd, remain on.
Yes.
I agree.
That was Sue, Camille, and Tom?
Sue, Camille, and Heather for HDA. For HSA, Sue, Mike, and Tom Miller. Okay, if I could remain on?
Yes.
For HAA, Sue, Mike, and Ted. Would I remain on that committee?
I will.
Okay. For the A, Tom, go attend the school board association. Was it slated for A, Tom, Sue Gilmore? You're good. Move on again. A lot changed. CSE, CPSA. We have Tom Miller and Ed. And ETA, the A, Tom, Mike, and Camille. All right. I thought it's late here. I'll easily put two motions separately, but I don't see an issue with doing that. Voting committee charter. Be resolved at the Board of Education, read out the voting committee charter from July 7, 2020, reorg meeting. Committee on Special Education, recommend the following individuals to serve on the committee on special education for 2020-21 school year. Your persons, Karen Moore. Leeson Air, Dr. Michael Pat, Patrick Boyd, Emily, Roger. Psychologist members, Dr. Michael Pat, Leeson Air, Karen Moore, and the members. Teacher members, their capable of all preschool agencies, evaluators, teachers, staff. And our physicians, our movement health. Committee on Preschool Education, Special Education, recommend the following individuals to serve on the committee on preschool special education for 2020-21 school year. Chairperson, Sarah Moore, Leeson Air, Dr. Michael Pat, Patrick Boyd, Emily, Patrick. Representatives of the relative agencies, in their capable of all preschool agencies, evaluators, teachers, staff. Impartial hearing officers, recommend the board prove following individuals to use as impartial hearing officers on a vocational basis as needed for 2020-21 school year. I don't think you want me to read the unnamed. Photocopying fee. Recommend the board establishes the fee for photocopying, district clerk, at 25 cents per page, which will obtain rights that we approved back in 2001 when this was on the board. Non-instructional substitute rate. Recommend the board establishes non-instructional substitute rate. Step one, corporate salary schedule of the HSA contract. Recommend the board allow the non-instructional HSA substitute based on the corporate salary schedule based on individual experience. J, election inspector rates. Recommend the board establishes the rate of $15 per hour of board approved election inspector. For the annual meeting vote, and if required, express community vote. K, instructional substitute rate. Recommend the board establishes the instructional substitute rate of $90 per day for uncertified individuals and $125 per day for certified individuals. School lunch prices. Recommend the board adopt the school lunch prices for 2020-21 school year. School lunch at elementary school, $3. School lunch in middle school, $3.25. School lunch to high school, $3.25. School directors, $2. Milk, 70 cents. Adult lunches to be determined, reduced meal, no charades. Building use rates. Recommend the board adopt the following building use rates for 2020-21 school year. Weekday rate, students' normal work week, up to two hours for classroom, $25. For field, $25. Cafeteria, $45. Gym, and auditorium, $45. Up to three hours, $35 for classroom and field, $65 for cafeteria, gym, and auditorium. Saturday rate, studio overcome. Classroom, fields, cafeteria, gym, auditorium, all $50 per hour. Sunday, holiday rate, classroom, fields, cafeteria, gym, auditorium, all $65 per hour. Note, school district reserves the right to set rates, including lawful or unsafe schedule, depending upon the estimated amount of cost, the district shall incur, staff to be available. And scorecards. Recommend the board establishes the rate of scorecards as follows. Scorecards for setup and take down, $50. Time clock rates, $50 for one game, $75 for two games. Shot clock rate, $30 for one game, $50 for two games. So can I have a motion to take other items from A through N? Please have a motion. Camille, second by Ed. Any discussion?
Oh, um, instructional separate at four, you said 1.5. Sorry. I might have got that wrong. So it's 1.5.
1.1 on K, instructional substitute rate. And is that the same as last year, or is that the
It is the same, but we compare it to the district president's competitive.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, so like our school lunch, we're dealing with applies since the last year. So we have a motion by Camille, second by Ed. Any further discussion? Can I have a All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Go carry. That concludes our reorg meeting. I'm trying to do that. Does anyone have any other concerns before we go into our old meeting regarding reorg? We didn't have to confirm on some of the committees for Heather and the appointment of vice president. All right. Just gonna open our meeting, our regular meeting, at 4:32. And this afternoon, we have a spec- special presentation from our capital project, resign and administrative team, the Rondo Group and CSR. I think everybody got a packet in your, in your facility program regarding what they're gonna discuss this evening. If there's any other questions, concerns, now's the time to ask the resign team and our management team all the questions. We'll do our presentation first. And Colleen. Tom Chester is here.
Yes, Tom Chester.
And Tom, representative of And if you guys can social distance, you can take your next one. No, we can maintain that.
My chair, um, how can I do?
You might?
Might.
We need to, to, uh, count the first person.
Do we think it's the same one time? But I think it's the same with him.
Is it actually because he's there? Who wants it over here?
Okay. Hello, everyone. This is an update on the R and capital project. Our committee members are changing. We're pressing on.
It's time, you're probably getting all certified.
It might have to be turned on.
Hello?
Okay.
I'm good. Okay, so this is an update on the capital project, where we are right now. I'll go through it, and some stuff will even be updated as we go, because things are happening. So, I'm going to talk about the different kind of contractors and where they are as of today, where we are with schedule. I'll show you some progress photos and a little bit of dollars and cents, and then we'll just talk about safety. So, right now, the electrical contractors, Hudson Valley, ECNM, they completed all the emergency lighting installs at the middle school. Couple of the floor entrance sites that were recently approved have changed and redesigned, so those aren't done. Lighting control work is completed. The drift stick has been trained by reps at the two different schools. We're mostly working the elementary school, what's going on. We have powered on two new unit ventilators and heating units there. So, power's already go. This is going to be a company that's terminated, so a lot of that work is complete. Demolition, existing lighting, it was all happening at the admin area of this building. We need bus circulation outside, it's all underway. Light bulb bases, conduits are all running the ground at this point. So, electrician's very far into the project. Dulcet Moore is a site contractor, president, so Mr. Redding, it's different now. It's completely, actually, complete. So, all this writing here is basically leading up to the turf field and the completion, but it was, um, wanted to paint it, it was beautiful, and if you guys have a chance to see it. We're also working on the bus loop out front. We're getting ready to figure out the pave within concrete work and base underneath the asphalt, so, um, so, and we don't be too far off from finishing that off. Special trades is the Sushu Shreys is the, has construction contractor to do all of the abatement. The high school is now complete. And the elementary school, phase one is complete and we are doing phase two with an anticipation of completing that work around next week. So that's the all underway, right on track. Darlin Construction is the general contractor on site at the elementary school. They've done a lot of penetration work in the exterior walls, the new unit ventilators. There's a lot of floor penetrations, there's duct work, wall penetrations. These walls are being built for duck chases, that's all well underway. A lot of demolitions is going on, the administration area is, is all demolition, just complete. The new ceiling, the library has been done. So it's, uh, well underway there. The next contractor, Sealy String, they're our mechanical contractor. At the elementary school, they're installing unit ventilators in the B wing, which is the kidney right there. And then all the other unit ventilators and associated equipment on site, they're in installation. So there's no whole bunch of fulgural problems to get them put on site. So we have everything here. As soon as the abatement is done, we'll continue. And we're getting prepared for rooftop units at the high school. And we're working in the admin area as well. For our schedule, in the coming weeks, the turf field installation will be complete after he is complete. I believe that was last Friday or Thursday. All asphalt patching around the field is going to be getting done. The high school, the bus drop off here. And if you saw it on the way in, that's certainly going to shake up with the last finished piece of getting rid of the asphalt. The interior of the high school, we're doing some steel framing work in the library, as well as some rough work. The elementary school, you know, unit ventilators are on track. We've had penetrations at the beginning, so schedule wise, we're pretty much right on track. So we've got some photos, some various items that we've been working on. And a couple of those, so there's an exterior wall penetration for unit ventilators. So that's a new unit that installed in the rooms. This is what's going on at the library, starting to put the framing in between existing truck and steel. We're working on a lot of the roof there.
Why is there so much steel needed to do?
The structural steel is existing and we're framing a light gauge frame for the new gypsy. We need to hold the ceiling up to get something bigger and, uh, how we should not see it all.
So you're not going to be seeing that ceiling? You're putting a seal, a hanging ceiling in?
Uh, it's going to be a gypsy one, our gypsy one.
Oh, that is like this?
Gypsy wood, cheap wood.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Yeah.
And then we're going to have piles dropped down for acoustical maintenance and then lining it well. Remember the panel on the UCF.
That's getting right.
Or new roofs. I was expecting other roofing structures to be matched to what was there. I didn't know we were putting up a lot of steel.
No, so you're going to have a new, a new metal roof and then in the center, you're going to have a skeleton.
When the primer starts to flow in frame, the remains are different. Okay. And remember now we're going to go to a singular skylight system on the very top of the library to help them and eliminate all of having e-gated layers just like by by. Alright, thank you.
So that's a follow-up to turf field. Yeah, the turf field came out real. That's just looking at the front loop. Looks a little different already from that forest and taking. We have lots of front plus loop. Okay, my trust has a date. So on a budget picture, we can look at the comp for the original and where we are now. And we are in good shape for ahead. We are underbodied on this project. And we have some changes coming through, but we're still on track to be underbodied. Safety, so obviously COVID nineteen is a big, a big concern. So there are protocols that are enforced daily on this site when we're working. As the government makes changes, we're adapting, the contractors are all adapting, modifying the plans. Everybody's having no issues following the protocol, we've got no, no concerns, no, no problem. Everybody following the right order. Students and staff, you know, across the land, safety is first priority. Construction workers and students and staff are always separated. We make sure that construction workers aren't talking with staff members, even teachers and everybody. We make sure that there's no communication. All contractors are required to be R and D badge in the building. We have full-time supervision here during all work and we make sure that all communications are through your loss. Because, you know, we're sure, you know, the collaboration is good. Something that's, 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 so we reiterate every, every job we can.
If they have a question about.
Yeah, Tom, can you clarify for most people? They might not know, like, turf field is over top of the old tennis court.
Yes.
I don't want somebody coming thinking this is a big, out the back.
No, it's a, yeah.
Picture really good.
It's, maybe a little more rare than it is, so it's, uh, it's over the old tennis court area. It was remapped and dug down and trepped for some turf field. And it's, it's Democrats, it's sort of, it's what.
Over the tennis courts?
Yep.
What's the answer, Tom, sorry?
One question. As much as you say, site construction is unscheduled. Dulcino is doing a great job out there, but we do have a potential of the well issue that's right in the middle of the bustle that has to be solved and that can turn out, make that go south real quick.
I think, I think we're real close to getting past that. So yes, that, that could potentially, so things up there, I think we're close to.
And Tom, we have to clarify to the rest of the board, this support service is the only one that are aware of the issue with the well. We did preface that for our last meeting when we approved the change order for the additional abatement work. But we have a, currently a issue with one of the wells that feeds our water system here at the store, which is located in the front of the building. That well was originally identified on, on the drawings, but there's a note saying that was to be abandoned, which the school district never said that, that that well is going to be abandoned. So now it's situated in the bustle. And since December, we're trying to get revolution of what the remedy can be to eliminate any potential contamination in that well and this approval of also kind of board help. So what Tom just mentioned, or Tom Miller just, just mentioned that there is an issue with the potential for delay caused by that well. So we want to know where we stand as far as, has the revised documents gone up to Department of Health as the county for review and have they responded?
We have completed the revised design. I do not believe they've been sent yet, but yeah, we have, I don't know. Yeah, they haven't been sent to Department of Health. We intend to send that to them. But they have all of the upgrades that we discussed at the last meeting with the monitoring system, camera system, to make sure that we have all the appropriate elements in place that will be acceptable to them. I think misability is a major concern for something similar to this being accepted by, by Department of Health. And so we're optimistic that we're going to understand that the ways to subvert this problem if we have to bring the well up above three, the concentration for that measure.
Just to make the board aware, the emergency school issue, Kurt, Mr. Peter Miller, sent a notification to our resigning team back in December of two thousand and nineteen, notifying them that that well is not to be abandoned, it is portable water for our system. Now you're hearing me now, it's July seventh. From December eighteenth, it still does not have water health approval or design recognition sent up to them. Is that order required for the school or is that? Mr. Miller, can you, uh, tell the board what's, how that system is monitored? We are regulated, water supply, first.
Now, Hallow High School is a municipal water system based on the population of the school. So we follow all the regulations. We have two wells that feed into a system. One is a backup to the other one, should there be any issues. Those cannot be segregated in the water system because two wells feed into the system. They feed into the water system and then they come into the water system and balance tank is feeding to the high school. And they need a hard time of order for monitoring fields and maybe somewhere out.
They both feed into one? Right. It's not a huge function.
They both feed into the same water. It's a, it's a, really a backup and you do use it and it's a feed in. We have presented previous designs to Department of Health. We've updated those with additional safety measures to see if we can present an option for them that is acceptable. The well has always been not needing a regulation, so.
So, I'm sorry. Just so unclear, Tom, you presented the component, the, 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 the board of health and they came back with further recommendations?
No, they came back with, well, they went back and forth internally in their department to get to somebody that eventually said, this is not something you want to consider. But again, that design didn't have the additional monitoring of the well through a meter root system or similar system like we have oil tanks as well as a camera system that can directly monitor the interior of that, of that box to make sure that there's no breaches in, in the system.
So, just so unclear, I mean, it's July seventh and I know the Milesville field though had us turning over everything prior to building the school and probably several weeks. I mean, I don't even know the exact date of the Milesville field. We're only six weeks away from the end of August. Are we going to have a certification from the health kind of board of health that the proposal is going to be accepted and we're going to have time to build the structure, get them made, build them in place, get the monitors in there and get our, our bustle paid?
So part of the structure, regardless of what the solution is, has to be put in regardless. And we submitted that information to the contractor to give us the information on fossilized, those approved and up. So part of it has to be done regardless. So we're, we're kind of working around when the final decision will be made. And that either means that we bring a well above the pavement line and put pollards around it or we can leave it in a sealed vault at the end of the meeting.
Where is that well sit in relation to the front? It's smack in the middle of a lane, is it?
Pretty much in the bustle.
Pretty much in the bustle, right in the middle. Ooh, more of the interior. Ballers put around that and not going to satisfy our issue. We're going to have more people running into it.
That's our concern.
In the middle of the park.
That's our concern. There's more safety issues than the issues of just monitoring with multiple systems to make sure that that doesn't come and kind of features us again. Yeah, it always comes up there.
Yeah, I guess, Tom, my question, sitting in this position is that why did it take from December eighteenth to July seventh? And even at July seventh, we don't have a final proposal up to what's going to be kind of board of health. Well, true, for example.
Well, again, we did present them with a proposal earlier than this and they didn't give us, you know, they, they came back and looked back on us. That's not something that they wanted to see. So we're trying to, you know, find a way to.
I don't know, but just, but nothing formal, from my understanding, went to the board of health. It was an individual that came on site and asked us, Tom. And Mr. Miller, if I'm wrong, if the proposal did go up to them, they came back with recommendations. I think that's what we are, we're waiting for, for new proposals to go. But I don't believe the proposal went up to them.
Why wasn't Anthony when they were on site? I don't think they were on site specifically related to those issues, was it?
Yeah, it was after we made contact with health department. Something was sent to health department on, uh, May twenty-sixth. I don't know where that was. I just hope that that issue, because I think it was an issue that would draw everyone attention. Really on the project, actually before shovel was put in the ground. And here we are, July seventh, without an answer. And it could jeopardize the completion of that on bustle in six weeks for school. How, Tom, how responsive has the board of health given issues like this? Oh, really? Not sure. So is there, you know, can you have Mr. Bon Jovi call? Can you call your son, that exert some pressure?
We did, for, for, I did go and that's when they gained, lined it all and then filled it all. Do a time painting and that's when we did.
Should board members also call? The support service got involved, but the support service got involved at a point when the first proposal that went up to the board of health was on May twenty-sixth from December eighteen. That's the concern. That's a five, that's up to six months. That will certainly have to be discussed, probably not here, but. Correct. We need to address the matter in a timely fashion. That's my concern.
Shouldn't they, they, they do with the, uh, our well? Are you really, things you plan to pass the, uh, the, 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 drop off in the back?
They'll, they'll drop off and pick up in the back?
No.
As far as.
School open doors, shouldn't it back?
School open and then bus drop off, existing bus drop off. So, 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 shouldn't that bus drop off? This is something that's. Parents drop off quite a bit and, and staff parking here and, and student drivers parked back here. That's just a lot. But it's not something that affects our CO. That I don't know.
No, this is, no. This is an early, early days. For design, the, the mechanics of it.
Oh, on the construction, yeah, well, this is a little pain.
Absolutely.
So.
It's exciting.
No, it's exciting, because that's problematic, that we, we're up to. So my question again is, should the board of health, the reasons of safety, say that this is not going to be a portable well? Obviously, we have to be part of that. We have, we have to probably explore the possibility of providing some portable non- portable. We would have to, it's more costly to provide this, you know, proposal not for work. So you have the pressure for the new field and for the, there'll be dedicated non-legal work. So we're going to need to order a period of rest for the safety of the staff and students.
Well, the concern is to provide that secondary supply of water in absence of using the well in the, in the dry. You would have to explore drilling and.
Exactly. You, you're confident about the proposal. My question, and again, not to push this spot here, but it's been questioned about, we've known about this question. So now we're back on the elementary pass to the Board of Health saying, who is the death of the, 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 they might as well plan it. They may, where it was safe, it's not safe, it's not healthy. I mean, we're willing to do their job, it isn't.
Well, we have talked about the other options. We have talked about drilling on the secondary level. We would have to look at the rerouting of that to, you know, feed the existing, you know, pain. And then the people that well, there's some questions as well.
Well, I don't like that idea. Numbers are not big on, that change and change that system. Obviously, it's had to be.
I think possibly in the worst case scenario, we would have to possibly drill a new well, hopefully in the vicinity of the present well. Then we could hook into the current lines that go, so it wouldn't, it shouldn't require re-digging lines. They'd be hooking to a line that's already out there that feeds the system.
See a long story. Let's, let's move on to any other questions? I'm just going to go through mine real quick. On the electrical end of it, are we currently going to have new lighting on our new turf field? Are those existing lights going to remain or are they functional? Do you know that? We've got new lighting in, in the plant.
I don't believe we have new lights in the plant. We were reusing the existing lighting.
I bet, I believe, mind you, they've tested and verified those once in the operation.
Let me tell you something, because I believe Jason looked at the lighting levels on the field.
It hasn't really lit up.
It has, it has to need a certain thing.
Yeah, but it hasn't been lit for years.
But the whole bus depot is lit up at night.
Well, it wasn't. The pennisport lights, the pennisport lights were disconnected when Osie's was writing the pennisports for air stuff.
They're not in operation currently?
No, currently they're wired to the construction trailer.
Okay. That's cool. That's good. Can we explore, can we explore validity of new lights or just new lamps? Say they're in operation, you can come back to the Board of, of.
So they're new base.
Because, I mean, the poles look like they're in good shape. The bases are in good shape. They have to put new lamps.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be a, for, for practice field on turf field, it would be a showcase for, I mean, if we could light it up at night or in dusk hour, it would be great. For practice.
We'll look at that. If we were trying to be able to get to the budget, obviously, the, you know, the, the, the table was important.
Always, always have to. Uh, the question as well. Just an update on the basement work at the elementary school. Are we moving along with the board gave authorization on the $8,000 change order? With the footnote that you commence on no later than June 29th. Did that all take place?
June 29th, they could not start. There was something, a report that we didn't do yet. LA came out immediately, did a report, and soon the report was ready to contract start.
Was required, or not required, they would get it.
It was done, the contract to K-N-M-G were under the, started early. We sold within that $8,000. We're not really, we shouldn't. After we had our change order meeting, I got together and, uh, for the first time, that was the T-N-M meeting. So we're hoping that we, we're.
Do you remember the T-N-M proposal? The numbers that you have, the worst case.
That's correct.
Not that. The $8,000 includes, includes the. Requested for, if you were in on that meeting, request my memory, do we say $8,000 not including airlock?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct. So I, so the whole way out from the contract is 61 and change, so I'm not going to see that.
Oh, not to jump the 61 and, 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 and like the less of.
Correct. That's why we did it. We're hopeful that we're, you know.
Um, roof penetration work, uh, when's that going to commence?
Uh, it's up to school.
All steel works can be done before this start, before the end, like four, five ahead?
I don't know how they're going to order it. The small foundation is going to be, uh, different, different. Every quality is good. Um, Tom, just, just an update on, um, media center slow plating, is that still on target for sometime of first February, early?
So now the confirmation, they put the factory, so now it's second of all. And as I said, that, that system will come pre-assembled, pre-made. Whereas the other system, we talked about, it was not put together, so it's a lot of work. Once that system gets on site, it can start getting.
Does the media center have to tie this up? Or additional work in the media?
It's going to be signed.
Yeah, not, not structural, is it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, nothing structural.
So you feel confident that with mid-August delivery and installation that we will still maintain our Miles from schedule through that portion of work?
I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful.
Any, any problems or anything about that?
We're definitely very careful.
And my final question would be, no wall schedule, are we working with Mr. Miller on the phone in to be able to turn over the classroom at the elementary school? And even up here, wherever we're doing work, it's ample time for him to have his proof of the, to turn throughout the floor and wax floor and build. And I know there's quite a few classrooms at the elementary school right now that are turned upside down. Is there a schedule in the, the whole end department on board that he takes it, you can be able to turn over the classroom?
So I think we're going to continue developing out of the abatement complete, but that's something that Brian is going to be, is going to be. Put together on that forgetting that. We'll turn that whole thing over, um, as we turn over the floor.
Hopefully, because I think our, our goal from day one, and it's one of the reasons why the Board elected to go to Olympics to study review. We spent an extra $30,000, whatever it was or more, I don't know if you have the numbers, but that was so we can get SED to give us approval while in the event of prime construction season, which we did. And we put the project out of bid in December anticipating that contractors would be on board immediately, which we approved January 14th. And at that point, the civil process, approval was on, equipment and everything would be in a timely fashion. So every month would hit the ground running come June 26th. Fortunately, that, well, unfortunately, I got to say that we ended up with a pandemic that did slow school construction, because the governor always said school construction is essential. We were, we should have been able to make up some time because now workforce would come in daytime, not second shift. And what I'm hearing right now is possible delay in our site development, possible delay in our media center configuration, and possibly other delays. That was not what I think the board brought into it, that next to that review, because I know specifically that it was sent to us. This one can recommend because it's going to make this project move along extremely seamless. And so far, it hasn't. It's serving to me and the support service, the same lights, the support service. Then you're, it's a lot of work. Hopefully, we can include some of that time, but again, July 7th, six weeks away from school release. But we're, we're six weeks to give.
Five weeks to give. Mr. Miller is all empty in time today to go back to school.
I feel the same. COVID didn't happen. We have a hands book, turn over all the spaces, get them cleaned up. But again, we're looking, looking through them to make it a little bit better than it should have been. With the COVID pandemic happening, we were able to continue work. There's certain elements of the project that we dig items. Really didn't start, it started earlier, but it started really beginning to begin. It made a major difference. So we did pick up some time, but with all the protocols in place, we're not able to nearly stop. Contract, contract, we need that time to be able to do the same amount of work. Because we can't work the same way now as we used to be able to before. So hopefully, remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Real soon.
So that's something to think about.
Well, I also think if we had done a regular, if we had done a regular review and were able to, if you kept it built, the project much later, I wonder would the cost have been that fitting this right in the middle?
Yeah, right.
I think, I think you guys got a lot of.
I think we're still in a very, very good position.
I think we were fortunate enough to cook the bids and we were able to work out that prior to.
Don't, don't disagree. That was the reason, that was the whole point of, of doing the extra time.
And the other part, it's with good timing, we got, we did. Not just that we were ready and we had time to do it, but we did right at the right time this time.
I think so.
Pandemic aside, there's a lot of money saved together.
I think that's it. Almost 40% on this project?
We, we value the fact that we're, we are human, we have enough time. We don't exceed cost by, like, we, we cannot use that because we know there's no rest expectation that we go through.
You want to put this down?
I just really, in the beginning, this delay was realized, it was good in the last, but we kind of have to part. You know, a lot of community, uh, people waiting for stuff to arrive and not stay on top of it. That, that didn't help us at all. It really didn't. And it's kind of put us in a spot, an animal, that we are a problem. Okay, it hasn't picked up so many business on that.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Tom, Tom, thank you for the presentation. I know we asked a lot of questions, only because we haven't really met quite a lot of the board, the rest of what's going on. But I think we're pretty well versed now and hopefully, come September, we'll have kids back in the building, students back in the building, staff back in the building. And it would probably, it would be a little bit bad, Charlie, thank you.
If we have a concussion in on the fourth.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving along, acceptance of course, be resolved with authentication upon recognition, who is the founder of the course? Board of Education meeting minutes, turn on unwatered course, create a summary in, in June 2020. Next to the class activity statement, watch Thursday, first 2020, prepare for the fourth, May 2020. We have motion put in, motion by McNeil, second by Tom. Discussion. All in favor? Who? Go carry. Take personnel as a block, okay with that, all the way up to X? No, G, G, sorry. A to G, we're taking as a block. Okay, can I have a motion to accept personnel as a block, they have to report, they have to registration, and we're open there. Motion to accept, motion by Mike, second by Tom. Discussion.
So we do want to thank the administration, given a lot of time to get the, the views in. This is the first time in a long time that we're actually, at the moment, we have all our positions filled. Now, I always say you never begin September with this half you left in June. There's always some change, but now we're filling all of our opening slots.
Get away, Bob. Any other questions, sir? Okay, hold up the favor. Tom, you're in favor?
Yeah.
Any motion? Tom, the favor. Hold up the pose. Go carry.
Yeah, so it's, uh, there's another people, I can't see if everyone is here. So I'm just going to give Kevin Murphy, if the new R I S could kind of step up to the microphone and just tell the, introduce yourself to the board and tell them what position and door building that you're going to be in.
Do you have one? So I think my last name.
You got work within your company, though.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Kevin Murphy. I appreciate you having me turn over the assistant principal.
Hello, everyone. I'm James Buckland. I'm a Spanish teacher at Howard Road School.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zanico. I will be your fresh teacher at Howard Road School.
Good to meet you, too. Again, on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to congratulate each and every one of you. I know, question for our, our, our language department. We're adding two new language teachers to that department. Very much appreciated. We now have a Spanish teacher and we have a French teacher. And sure, you get informed that somewhat big shoes you have to fill there, but I think you guys can deal with it. And for our new assistant principal of the high school, congratulations. Good luck. I think you guys will work as a team and move to our high schools forward. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Why are we sitting over public comment in the beginning of the evening?
Public, public comment. Our beginning half of public comment is only for agenda items. Our back end of public comment is for questions in general. But we have no public comment on the front end of our meeting tonight. We have it at the back end of it.
What is that agenda item?
People were, it's not one of the actual post agenda, it's not a, it's not a slight at all.
That's interesting because there was always time that.
No, it was.
It was always there, open public comment.
Sometimes we did not have it on the front end. There were times we correct, there were times we had it on the front end. Front end public comment is for agenda items only. The back end of public comments is for, you know, anything you get public on to the agenda.
It's gone that way for years.
But it has, this is not unintentional, believe it or not. It's done in the past.
There's a lot of, you know, most times I would see in a board meeting and, so. People have families that they have to go home to, so just.
Well, hopefully, hoping that you realize that we had reordering at the beginning and we had special presentation, that took up a lot of time. I mean, we started just a little over an hour ago and went through special presentation and our reordering, which I think is pretty good because reordering sometimes can take a lot longer. But we moved it along well. We have to have reordering for our opening meetings. The reordering has to appoint new board members and vice pres, uh, president and vice president. Okay, we will move along quickly and assure you that it will be a public comment. A business in operation. Whether chance to be resolved with Board of Education based on recognition, so content, who is following letter transfer. The 2019, 2022 year, the Board of Education meeting, letter transfer number 10251, $17,300. Letter transfer number 10215, $20,000, have motion please, motion by Mike, second by Neil. Discussion. All in favor?
Uh.
Close, go carry. Mark revolution, mark revolution prevented to the course this meeting dated July 7, 2020. Board of Education, the High and Central School District authorized that to receive $453,742. Aggregate principal now material, general obligation drawn from financing and purchase of school buses. An estimated maximum cost of $453,742. Level of tax and annual installment, payment thereof, expenditure of such comes to such purpose, determining other matters and connection therewith. We have a revolution, can I have a motion? We have a draw call, motion by Tom, second by Sue.
Okay, I'm going to just state a name. You can just say A Renee. Emile Nona? Michael Caxias?
Yay.
Tom Miller? Sue Gilker? Ed Masell?
Yay.
I'm sorry, A? Al Rom?
Yes.
Okay, so that's five to two. I don't know if that will pass. That's bad. Okay.
Wait, do you think they have?
It has to be two thirds.
Two thirds.
Yeah. I have it here. It is. It has to be two thirds of the, of the, I don't have these on here.
Four to, right?
Four, half of the.
If we're more to it, wouldn't it might be four to?
Be on the whole board, right? Seven members. It has to be a majority, two thirds of the seven members.
We'll, we'll clarify that. Can I ask the reason why we have, we were able to change?
We had to reduce program by just about that amount in the budget process. I didn't really support putting that out to go. I understand the community did vote for it, they do. But I'm gonna stick by, um, I'm gonna stick by my opinion on this.
Everyone wants.
Please, uh, you, we're bringing out, um, bringing the going totally cheap.
We have to pull seven million dollars for that.
Come on, let's say nature. Plus, what's our approval on transportation aid? Over sixty percent. So we're gonna have about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars at one percent. They got defeated, we're not gonna be able to purchase parts of the bus at this point.
If you put it back up at the next meeting and you got seven board members, they'll do it.
I think we need a.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, because both of the two was what was approved, wasn't it, Dallas? Yes. Okay, roll the ball. Did the national school?
So, this was pretty cheap, right?
Right. Are you going to speed it and looking it back again?
We can't, we gotta get, we gotta get a legal.
We'll get a legal opinion.
We gotta get a legal opinion before we move forward on it. What are obligations, even though the voters approved it and we not approve it? Okay, National School One Program Agreement. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation superintendent who would have passed agreement, the High and Central School District, participate in National School One Program, School Director Program, and our Special Bill Program for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year, beginning of the board agreement. You have a motion, please? Motion, motion by Camille, second by Tom. Discussion. All in favor?
Uh.
Close. Go carry. Court report, Lisa.
Results? Results from the June ninth, twenty twenty annual meeting in Board of Education. Do you resolve that the Board of Education, upon recommendation superintendent accepts the below figures as the official results from the June ninth, twenty twenty annual meeting in board election? The school district budget, which was forty four million, nine forty six, eight hundred thirty nine. Proven with yes, one thousand seven twenty nine voters, no, eight twenty three, that passed with a simple majority vote. Proposition number one, school bus proposition for four fifty three, thousand seven hundred forty two, yes, one thousand six eighteen approved, no, nine sixteen passed. And results from the Board of Trustees election, Alan Brown with one thousand nine eighty four and Heather Welch, two thousand thirty one. I just also wanted to thank Michelle McGrath and Mary Ann Estadio for helping so much, volunteering their time for the past few weeks with the process of the mail in ballots. Thank you.
Okay.
Now just need the board to approve those numbers, please. So motion?
We have, we have a motion. We have a motion to accept the annual meeting in board election.
Motion by Tom.
Second by Camille. Any other discussion? I, I again want to thank Lisa and this was trying experience for her. I mean, uh, something that we haven't had ever, I think, in a school board election. And I'm gonna have to say this in front of everyone that came out of this, that planned, but I mean, it was nerve wracking. Our directors weren't, you know, pinpointed, we went through from June ninth to June sixteenth. We were worried about are we gonna get our ballots out in time, get them back in time, but I think you did a job, an exceptional job. And we probably could have opened all our ballots on June ninth. But we had to wait until next year. Again, congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for helping me out as well.
So we have a motion by Tom, second by Camille, all in favor?
Uh.
Close. Go carry. Sarah.
As you all know, we did a survey of parents. And to get an idea of how our emergency closure from March until the end of June, plans getting some feedback about, um, costs for next year. It was really a combination of many different things. I wanted to share the results with the board as well as the community. We will have this posted on the website as well for anyone who's interested in that. We did a student survey as well. The administrative team is still going through that. I'll share those results later. That was a little bit more specific to technology and program that we did during this time. The parent response was a plot picture of, of, um, what we did, where we might come up to where we're going forward. This looks long, but I'm gonna go through it quickly through it. I don't know if you can wait it out, and wait it out, see if you can see. We sent the, the link out, we're the end of June, it was up for about five days. We received four hundred ninety six responses, which is not exactly a very good response on the survey. All three buildings were represented, pre, pre, not the core community, but, um, close to the number of the, the program. Forty percent of responses made the elementary, thirty one percent in middle school, and twenty eight percent of responses made high school. And all grade levels, one to twelve, start here down to bottom, so to, were pretty well represented. And a few more sixth grade parents, um, they could also pick whatever grade, you have multiple grades in the two terms. So anyway, um, this was definitely representative of the entire. Um, so the first question, first main question on this was, you know, if we institute some safety precautions, would you send your students back to school or not? I mean, that's the big question right now. Of course, as you can see, the majority of parents, thirty two percent said that they would send their children back to school with safety drop in place. Thirty eight, six percent said that they would consider a blinded option, or we might come to school too with the day to week and have online for the, um, the other days. A significant minority, almost twenty percent, said that they would prefer online learning. And then other groups like others, unfortunately, everybody asked for this survey, didn't really get responses about what the other would need, so I'm not sure what else. Those are, those are really the three options that seem to be on the plate. If you look at guidance documents across the country. We then asked about what types of safety measures people would like to come over to place, or what would make them feel safer. We included temperature checks when, when people, students as well as others, went into the building. Of course, particularly affecting hybrid services, small class sizes, so everything is sort of distantly, mandatory face mask, and hand washing every two hours. These are, of course, all of the things, again, that are out, um, to the general population. Really, what this survey indicated is that people feel all of these things are pretty important. There was a little bit more discussion about mask wearing, both girl and con, I would say. I, from reading the responses of parents, um, there was more of the younger students that parents really felt like that would be a possibility, um, or that would be good for the students. We had four hundred fifty two open responses to the question, the biggest, um, if your kid comes back to school, remember what worries you most? So obviously, I can't share all four hundred fifty two of them, um, but I did look through, I read every single one, this categorized them. Of course, their biggest fear was that their child would contact their team, or that they would bring it home to their family members if they didn't get back to the club. But there was also a significant group who stated that they were not worried about coming back to school, that they were confident that the district would really be interviewed, made safer feelings. Otherwise, we clearly categorized in three ways, um, between safety, learning environment, and academics. Teacher or parents have concerns about, um, six students coming to school, so parents sending their students to school when they're sick, not realizing they're having something home. Again, mask wearing, concerned about putting a mask on, not wanting to wear one. And there's students who have other health concerns that make wearing masks difficult, things like asthma or other conditions. They were concerned about social distancing and maintaining social distance for students, and that's not something that comes naturally with such as very young students. Although others think that would be for any situation, we are natural for that. And then of group parents with the meaning to compromise either students or others in their household. Uh, and then parents who were distancing on the bus, the social distancing. There were other responses that these women were referring. Learning environment, that we could have small enough class sizes to really social distance, and if they have the ability and the mobility and the space for that. In terms of the climate, there's a negotiation of the building, have other common areas, often concerned, of course, about restrooms. Safety protocols that would lead to, um, not a negative learning environment, so worried that we'd be so concerned about COVID and following those rules that it makes it either a fearful environment for students or a distraction from their regular learning. That is very common. Company, and then of course, academics, many parents are very concerned about the learning, um, that they either lost or didn't advance during the lockdown. And what that means for next year, some students have to put some parents to advocate every key in the year, but that's directed for the morning. There were concerns that their students would be rushed through, because they have a catch up in that time, and then try to catch up with where they were needing to be, and they were third or back there to get them to where they should be in fourth grade. They were also concerned about their O T P, to special education services, that, um, you know, not necessarily college, but better, uh, S D Ts, um, because they're not right then and there. Or that was about COVID. And then there are also people concerned about continuing their learning. That's not great for students, they're in a quality, it's time that social, emotional health will suffer if they're, uh, they're isolated, they're being, it's on longer. So those were the, the basic responses, um, and nothing else was stuck out. Then we asked a similar question, but what do you need us to do is we need to be confident sending your students back to school. The most important, uh, was, my fear is this is a plan for the opening. That is something we're working on currently, but we are ready for specific corrective in New York State. That's supposed to be, should be coming up in the Department of Education next week, so we'll have a better idea of where we're really going. They'll fill you a vaccine, we all know that that's probably not the immediate future, that's probably not the same way. They thought that if there were low infection rates in the state or the region, that that would make them feel more comfortable, they're going to have a school. Concerns of safety protocols we're starting to report and appear to. They wanted to be sure that we were balancing those safety protocols to send some sense of normalcy for the reality of the students, so that we didn't focus so much on being healthy and safe. That we didn't allow kids to be killed or be direct. A lot of parents said, I mean, fingers and people involved, that there's students who are best in there, if another adult would be helping explain what's happening. Many comments about, you know, I don't know, maybe it's just trying not to, I have parents who are working well, um, and of course, continuing to be, to be, to be. So that, that's the other round of what we're hoping for from parents to work on there. Um, devices in permanent connection, I just wanted to see where people were. You know, I think this information would be a little bit skewed because I love having them build this out actively. So, um, you know, if they're filling it out, it's a little bit of having access, so we did not speak on the survey that we needed to do a lot more. We did hand out almost three hundred devices, both iPads and notebooks, over the courses, the three months that we were closed. But that's definitely something we're working on next year. Just ask students, that's how their students felt about the closure, and I think very interesting, students seemed to be generally either neutral or mad about being closed for three months. I know there was a small group that was happy with this, I definitely saw that response, but they, they liked being able to grow their own case. I love my own experience, my daughter is going to be in later in the line. So that was, that was one response. But overall, people or parents said that their children had difficulty, got frustrated without the prep instructor, had to get the pass through again. Frustration with like, oh, the video conferencing, I also have many conferences, you know, really giving teachers, who are, who are hardworking, who are, who are, who are. Time on pass. Majority of students, they're typically seeing one to three hours, um, a day, someone in the class. And again, most parents either felt that it was just the right amount of time or maybe not quite enough time. And I, I do think that there was a little bit of a divide there between households where students either have their own individual device or didn't have to share with too many other people. Definitely, uh, we have comments that, you know, in households where all the students can share one device or where they, um, had to share with their parents. The, either with more, still with too much time or not, um, or doesn't have the right amount of time. I think that's what's happening. Transportation, so this is really looking ahead to next year. If you look at board, probably seventy eight, the majority responded, uh, use power school transportation, twenty one percent live in the school. We asked, what about next fall? It looks like there will be a significant number of parents who choose to live in some other way. You know, I don't know, once we, once it really, we have the full plan, but that was really the case, of course, there's more information and science being looked at and given off this common daily basis. So it does give communication, though, that we probably can, can try and move on to. Food service, the same kind of thing, um, you know, do you plan to have your child buy to school or not? There was a decent number of parents that said prices have changed, um, very, very well, so more likely, you probably have your students in and home on the charter than you have in school. So again, that one will see more on the next, on the next, on what food service. This again is looking at the remote learning again next year, and what kind of, what can we do to make it better? More guidance for online learning, that would definitely be the highest rank, and this is a quick pick, more than one of these. So the highest, high rate is one, and technology assistance, um, market of households, keyword sites, more environments, and then other. There are a lot of problems. There's a lot, failing to protect, um, or uniform use of school energy if they were grades about fifth through twelve or seesaw, I don't remember grades. Um, some ones are difficult for families to navigate out of classes, like we've got some work that's something we're working on, no matter what way that we leave school next year. Um, that's a bad word, isn't that? Many parents wish that there had been more video conferencing happening, maybe just like on teams. Some grade levels were doing a lot of it, some didn't, um, so that's something we've got to look at a little more on next year. Maybe parents wanted a more structured day, so that it was a little bit more like you're dealing hurt, but of course, we had to balance that again with the students who. But of course, we had to balance that again with the students who had multiple students who were in the vice. Um, of course, of course, overall, um, the feedback told us that more parents would rather see in-school learning in some back or another. Whether that's full every day or a blended opportunity. But there is a significant group of parents who, um, are not one of the kinds of like, you know, second-class parents. Parents, of course, are still concerned about the threat of COVID-19. And not only our district's commitment, but the community's commitment to following all of the protocols. Uh, and that we also need to look at access to devices. And that's something we've already ordered, another two hundred and fifty devices. So that we do need for remote learning, either at the beginning of the year or some times throughout the year. And we have more available, more people available at the time. But overall, we really appreciate the time that the parents took to do the survey. It does give us feedback. Um, as I said at the beginning, we won't know a lot until the beginning, hopefully, of next week. We have a little more specific guidance. Um, there are so many chapters in the district that will be considered. Almost every class, almost every states in the, in the, in the district will have to be thought about and then planned for. So, um, there's no guarantee, but school might be right. But I'm wondering, we are looking at responding to parents' vocal requests their concerns on their lifestyle.
Sarah, thank you very, um, very much for deciding to me. So I'm sure that the parents, um, were able to get out some of their stress by this questionnaire. Um, on the one page where what do you need to do about sending your child back to school? I guess I would add another bullet point, don't come to school sick. Don't send your kids in sick and, uh, if you find it sick, try and, they got it at home. Not nurses, so they got it at home. And my latest question, uh, devices and internet connections, three percent of our students don't have any connection or reliable connection. What are people about that? It's three percent, four hundred, still, well.
So what we did during this particular shutdown is we worked very hard to get them, um, hot stuff by hot stuff, through the app, through Verizon. Um, unfortunately, it took a little while to do that because everyone in America was trying to do the same thing. So it took a little bit of time. But I think my understanding is that by the midway into the, as far as I know, everything that needed it and knew about had, had the reach on. Um, I'm not guaranteeing for a name of the person, but I'm there. It's highly a big, um, um, concern.
So first of all, when you're listening to the required protocol, if a student comes in and identifies as ever possible, are you prepared to?
Well, we weren't really in school long enough to have a protocol.
But didn't you say before that, 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 that?
It, it wasn't very specific. You know, did we try to, we're in this position where we were, I think we were all kind of going on that. That we were going to sit down and have this really pressure on the government department at that time.
The media, the guidance.
I'm really hoping that the guidance rate all got out.
I imagine it was something like that, a little bit specific, habits on how they look at.
Very likely possible, and current CDC guidance, it's not, so is that we're going to start that?
Everybody's anxious to see those initial reports coming from the task force.
I think it's very likely that even if we come back, the person in the wall that we would probably see that we didn't sort of, you know, like that, that part might be under and, and I think it's all part of the doubt.
Sarah, did you get any feedback from the top chat at the end of the year? I mean, maybe that would be a simple, you know, I've spoke to a few and I think they were comfortable with this in running only because they were ready for the next, they were students. Fire for that, they were prepared for March. Going through, a lot of months ago, and then September, not knowing who their students and how they can talk.
So that's a, Nicen has put out a position paper on behalf of their members to everyone.
Yeah, and I would say the majority of teachers that I've talked to, and I, I did really want to survey the teachers. We did really want to survey this, yeah, because until we really have a plan, it's all kind of conjecture. But, um, most teachers that I've spoken with are pretty anxious to be back with their kids. But now, you know, as things evolve, that part will come through.
So moving forward, the state has asked school leadership to put the plan together and send out the month for you to do. And I know I said this before in my presentation, we're, you know, seven weeks away from opening up. And they gotta, they gotta move a little quick to get us, put the plan out for us.
So again, so the guidelines are coming out, coming out this Thursday, of course, into next week. Uh, the health and safety guidelines will come from, from the full mode. And the education guidelines will come from state debt. Uh, again, this is a, I don't know if I can explain, but it's basically three options. That either we will be in-person with, I'm sure, a number of regulations, health and safety regulations that we will have to follow, uh, with the possibility of blended, which is probably more likely than the first. So blended, I mean, uh, there'll be some sort of schedule that students should be on. A number of schools are talking about that, uh, you know, they would spread students out among all their buildings of their district. But not that the students should come every day to school. And so perhaps the younger grades would come every day. And then, you know, older grades would be coming on a rotating schedule. And of course, the third option is that we come back to all virtual or, or if it's a work we were at. Um, really, we are, we will be ready for whatever scenario that we have to move. Um, but we'll be meeting, uh, next week as soon as the guidelines come out. We'll be putting our committees together, uh, we'll record and meet and discuss, kind of, how do you do it? Nearly every school district, uh, in speaking with all the superintendents, everyone's in the same spot. Uh, they, they have a general idea of what's the plan will be. But really, you can't waste too much time or spend too much time planning a lot of things until the guidance comes out.
And next week's report, I mean, it's coming in parts. Next week is like the first phase, but they're meeting each week and then reporting out. So we hope by the end of July, we have that data that we can then enact upon people.
So this is a question, what are the points that are in place about COVID-19 teachers? So we jumped into it and I live is, you mind with the technology? And just seeing that we've been in the hospital, we're in the area, and people are really going down to teach each other, each other, and, you know, the better teachers to have kids.
So what we're looking at next is doing a, part in a survey of what types of instruction can they, they would like on our, um, um, schoology, on CSO, on, um, some of those online resources. But then we're also working with also O C S, online work. Our summer, our summer work is volunteer for teachers, or not volunteer, but it's, we can't make teachers do summer P D. So we'll be looking at that as we, as we begin school year, once we have our idea of what that looks like for our, for our student management.
And this is into that, that the way to kind of push our policies in the third grade, that can we're back in person, and they're, again, thinking what we should be doing. We hope that there's not more. Our last question was about specific babies, so when these babies are born, when the given stakeholders, like, so the parents, or members, and about penalties for involving parents where that members, main members.
We'll make sure we have representation from, I think it was our primary diversity contribution from all areas. So because, you know, different people, uh, are impacted. Like, like you said, you have depending on, uh, if students aren't here every day, you know, parents, you know, there's issues. Because most people are back, many people are back working now. Uh, so that's going to be an issue, if students aren't going to school every day. Uh, the issue of, you know, the devices, changing their activities. Uh, so yes, you know, we plan on having members of all groups, you know, that, uh, do.
And I would figure with the, also think that we have a district level group and then still we can help out the smaller, um, to support the, 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 the.
When you come back to devices, I think it's very, that they push out, we're getting more devices. But then again, just trying to have that there, we get the devices, we mostly do it as a real way. And people are looking around tablets, smartphones, so we can also, you know, we're going with tablets or smartphones. It's not really the best platform, just kind of, again, trying to touch up to get more devices. And so all the same, we're all saying devices. But that's going to make a difference to, if you're watching the web apps or Google, you know, it doesn't work as well as, you know, certain types of, of stuff, just kind of, you know, keep that in mind if you're, if you're doing. Just I don't think it's going anywhere.
Yeah, I've, uh, uh, all my conversations that I have, I'm actually, I'm sorry. Um, my, the conversations I have with Mrs. Haddash, uh, our goal would be if we can get enough devices, we can invite at, by the middle of the year to be on this one, we can get through what, very, very, with, uh, robots. And then, um, we'll be at five, that's one really good area. And we're about to get that. So that, any other questions on, on that? So the other areas, um, that, I think the people that are in the room, um, this morning, who are, who are, who are popular. Uh, I did want to review with the Board of Education, the plans that we have in place to address, particularly, there's, um, these are things that, some of them were in place or going to be starting at the end of last school year, uh, then we shut down. And we really have to look very much at delivering instructions. So, um, this summer, the work that we're doing, and I, I mentioned this at the last couple of board meetings, as a, as a graded team, we are gathering data, um, looking specifically at comparisons of different groups of students that we have generally done. Um, looking at assessment results, both internal tests of our, our assessment, um, the STAR data that we have from our middle school grades, as well as from our state assessments. Um, we are looking at attendance rates, referral rates, and types of the classes that students are being heard for, uh, as well as graduation rates. Um, that, once we have all that data in place, we have most of it ready. There are a few things that we have to, of course, in supermastery. It's not something that is easily, um, pulled out from our student management system. Uh, once we have all that information, we'll be using a book called Solving Disproportionality in a Changing Equipment. Um, we just got to using data to change parts and lines, this is by Edward Purvis. Uh, and it's, it's really a guide for moving through data, looking at it from an equity standpoint. Um, as we look at that data, making decisions about what we will do with, uh, instruction through the discipline, all of us going to be doing with the next school year. Uh, those books have been quoted as a, as a, also, we decided as an administrative team that we are all going to read the book Stamped, Racism and Anti, um, Racism and Anti-Racism and New by James Reynolds and Andrew T. Kendi. Uh, this is actually a, a gem called History Book, told from a, um, an anterogon perspective. Uh, I don't know if anyone in my experience read it. It's actually pretty pristine, again, my age level, uh, it's a board of interested readers. We get copies of them as well. But this goes through the history of the United States, um, a very, very game, um, obviously, to, 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 to say, all that I do, and do, a different perspective on this day and, and perhaps it will be standard, uh, for, for me. So that was, I was, I was there too. Um, from that, we're, we're close table, we're like doing major buildings, creating programs within the buildings. Uh, we will be doing a teacher book club, um, a book for agility, I brought on the radio. Um, it looks quite, we can get that book now, Ben, for quite a while. It was, it all comes along, so it looks like there's gotten something up. Uh, we'll be forming that, that would be a long, very, very, for, for teachers that they participate in through the summer. Through all of that work between administrators and working with the teachers, um, going into the 2021 school year in September, we will be doing parents, students, and staff surveys about, um, their experiences, their, it would be certainly, they're, they're, from those surveys, we will all be in focus groups with several administrations and members of the community, and then we'll be small group, focus groups, as well as parents and staff focus groups. Um, and then we will be doing district-wide work on anti-racism. Part of that will be curriculum review. There are several rubrics available that, um, helps educators, educators look at, you know, the representation of people within their curriculum, as well as other factors, not only in P L A, but in all common areas. So that's part of the different summer, the, 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 right now, it's very different from, from N Y U, but it does focus mostly on P L A. Um, we'll also be looking at programs for, maybe on physical files, I mean, very well. But again, that will be a lot of work that we're doing this summer to investigate some programs. I'm hoping also that also O C S will be offering more for teachers next year as well. So that's where we are right now, um, in this, this, this.
Will the survey be, are there any house, or are we going to be using, are we going to be?
We're going to be using outside, so that's why we're going to be outside, because we will, we will be.
Okay, questions, Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Uh, so the closing of schools was something that no one could ever imagine, uh, really, in our lifetime. But this is one, that's, so I really do want to thank, again, the faculty, the staff, students, parents, and more, and the community for really coming together through a extremely difficult time. Again, uh, I've never taken online class. I know that, uh, I'm not okay with this, but, uh, but imagine a, you know, a young student. You have to take in one online, but you're taking all of your classes online with really, with no warning. Uh, and you're doing it every day for several months. Uh, so there was a lot of pressure on students, on the families. And I know that it was very difficult for many, many families. And in especial, thanks to so many people who I love beyond too many names. Uh, I do want to specifically go point out, uh, really, our food service department just did an incredible job putting together, uh, food families, uh, people were coming every Wednesday. So they're really working Monday and, or Tuesday, we have to prepare for that. Uh, it was a fantastic job, and we have a fantastic department also. Uh, and our custodial staff, uh, this was, uh, you know, for some things, uh, we were able to get ahead on some of the cleaning that we normally do in the summer. But really, just all that extra cleaning and the protocols they did was fantastic. In class of 2020, though, certainly my heart goes out to them. Uh, you know, high school graduation is kind of one of those big movements in your life. And, uh, they aren't going to have the usual graduation that they're thinking of. Uh, and they've just been amazing. Um, the school, though, really stepped up. Uh, they had a lot of great presentations, all the drive-throughs they did, and then those are continuing. And the yearbook just came in, so yesterday, today, and tomorrow, I believe, uh, a drive-through for the yearbooks. Again, you can imagine, yearbook companies are not considered essential. They all shut down and pretty much, there's only a few companies in the entire country that make yearbooks. Uh, and that's why they are so late. Groups like the Hound Educational Foundation, they've stepped up and they gave one of those individualized graduate, uh, yard signs, which were just fantastic. And although Pete Heisen, who gave also pink or red or necklace or a missing senior, which was, uh, very nice also. As far as. As far as graduation, so again, we did survey the students and the parents, the guardians, they wanted to wait. The majority overwhelmingly wanted to wait and not do it on the regular scheduled date, in the hope that perhaps we can see a little bit more. Right now, uh, there's a hundred and fifty is the total number of students that have a graduation. So if nothing changes, again, our date is Thursday the thirtieth of July, the remainder of Friday the thirty-first. I will say we'll make a final decision next week, but it will be in, if it was tomorrow, it will be in three different sessions, most likely. All in the same day, at three different times, probably starting in mid to late afternoon, similar to some of our surrounding districts. A graduate, uh, we have about forty-five graduates, then at each sitting, each graduate can bring in two guests with them. We will most likely have the graduates three chairs at a time, so the graduate will sit with their two guests. And then they'll be six feet away, we'll get another three, and so on. And that's gonna put, with the faculty and staff and faculty president and the board, that's gonna put you at a hundred and fifty people. So again, you can anticipate, uh, a final, uh, in stone time next week. It will be at three different times, all in the same day, and we will make it the very best we can for our students to deserve that. Again, uh, I really thank the Board of Education for all of their support through this, uh, after the COVID crisis. And we look forward to, uh, you know, the best possible situation, but again, as we've mentioned, we don't know what's going to happen. And we certainly can anticipate that, we know we've all seen it, we've heard it, that one person does test positive, depending on how many people they've been contacted, that could very quickly spread. Uh, so we do anticipate, you know, short closing, or perhaps even a longer closing in the fall. And now, Ben, is all we have, Mr. President?
Do you want to have any questions? Okay, thank you. On the Board of Education, is there any concerns, uh, we, the old ones that we feel?
Actually, I have one quick, um, for our next regular business meeting, could we have, we talked about, uh, how health insurance was such a large expense going into the 2021 budget. If we could have that number broken out in a pie chart, so we can see the percentages and the pieces that make up that pie, that'll begin our discussion, that's all.
Will take care of it, please? Anyone else? Okay, anything for the good, low, fair, the vision? All right, we will now open the floor up to a couple of comments. I just wanted to read a couple of things before we get going. The school board serves as public participation and speaking. So last week, this meeting, the committee meeting, we give each speaker a fair opportunity. To present their perfeaters, quality self-apply to the public speaking portion of the agenda. Please, speakers shall state their name. Any questions, concerns, or submitted or any of the speakers' contact information, and ask if you'd like to do that. The speaker shall be limited to the time, as the lead, I'm seeing you might have multiple speakers, so please, I don't want to put a timeline on it, but start with your, your, your speech, and then if you want to come back up, a lot, a lot of that. All right, the board will not commit discussions involving individual personnel or students. And direct all remarks to the chair. Community members cannot hold individual orders, nor debate other community members in attendance. Uh, members of the community are encouraged to also present their comments and writings. Undue interruption or other interference in the building conduct of Board of Education business is not allowed. So I'm sorry, for each remark, I will leave a note. So with that being said, um, I just want to let the audience know that, and I'm sure I'm not out of line saying that, we're going to have speakers speaking about the Highland Central School's testimonial. Uh, just so you're aware, we, we received this yesterday afternoon, so I'm not sure if every board member had the opportunity to read it. And if he did, I, I read the whole thing, and I probably have to read it again, comprehend everything that was being said, so the law documents, the, the, so. Uh, with that being said, we might not be able to react to you this evening. We will hear your comments, uh, we'll take them into consideration. I'm sure the board is very open to listening to your comments, and also having other dialogue, maybe not this evening, but, uh, we have our next meeting.
Don't worry, I'll be back.
Dana?
Sure you will. Before you turn it over, um, I looked at our last three agendas. Previously, this gave him, none of them had a startup to do with the work designed for the public session. At the end.
We, we do, that's right, let, let him go. All right, so, uh, state your names, and, uh, we'll listen to, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening, I thought you'd be back in, but it's not. My name is Celia Gately, and I am a Highland alum now, coming in class of twenty seventeen. Because of its absence, I would like to start my remarks off today, acknowledging that we are on a traditional territory in Sulu Land, Kalanape, and the Kipin. We have built colonial structures on their land, we need only us who can dismantle them. Able in silence, please. Thank you. Since graduating from Highland, I have attended Middlebury College in Vermont, where I studied political science, sociology, and gender acquaintance and feminist studies. This course of study has caused me to reflect on my grade school education. A time that was characterized by Confederate flags, the courteous use of racial slurs by white students, teacher-endorsed anti-Semitic guilt, the villainization of non-white students in visible xenophobia, as we go on. In high school, I knew nothing beyond Highland's discriminatory culture, and I spent years normalizing it and the term like they call it. Now, I have the tools and the confidence to speak out. The current Highland Central School District curriculum lacks an effective education on race and gender identity. Its absence of culture, involving both students and faculty, has developed, which permits ignorant and racist behavior at the expense of Highland Central School District students of color. Highland must adopt actively anti-racist policies to combat this culture. I must emphasize that families of color need to get a forefront of these conversations and changes. It is time for you all to listen to their needs and step up for our community. We do not and will not reduce racism into a matter of nice people versus mean people. I trust that you all, like me, consider yourselves to be good people, and also that the people you employ are inherently good people. However, being good does not override simplicity. All humans have prejudice, as we cannot avoid it. I am prejudiced, you are prejudiced. It is simply part of the fabric of our society which has normalized bias on the basis of difference. Those who claim to be immune to prejudice advertise their profound lack of self-awareness. As such, Highland must admit to its socialized prejudice and consider how the district acts as a discriminatory body that upholds white supremacy. One must consider racism to be a straight act of injustice committed by individual people, or rather a complex and interconnected system that upholds and follows and breeds discriminatory bias through our institutions. Education is one of those institutions. In 2016, the people who decided to book some reddish schools were ninety percent white. Teachers in the US were eighty-two percent white. Our history books are whitewashed by those who sit in positions of power. Faces that have remained remarkably similar, white, male, straight, cis, middle of the class, and able-bodied. Excluded by those at the table, judging intent on local intent. You don't have to intend to exclude for the results of our actions to be excluded here. Highland's curriculum is a manifestation of this exclusion. It is not just the content of our textbooks, PowerPoint slides, and classroom conversations, and potentially now online conversations, that are radically charged and centered around whiteness. On average, in the United States, when black students and white students commit similar infractions, black students are suspended and expelled at three times the rate of white students. According to Pro Publica, that ratio increases to five point one times in Highland. Yet, black students in Highland are five point one times as likely to be suspended than their white peers. Distant students are three point eight times more likely to be suspended. Students of two or more races are four point eight times as likely. Racial disparities in disciplinary action is Highland institutionalizing racism. It is clear we need to be better as a school and as a community. In less than two weeks, almost one hundred testimonials regarding issues of race discrimination in Highland Central School District were collected. These are only word of mouth. A collection of all those statements has been sent to the board by email and is in the tablet in front of you today. Today, we will be sharing some of these statements. I'd like to issue a flagrant warning. They are a light warning, they are vulgar, and at times, the content is repulsive. Names of specific individuals that have been accused have been rejected for the safety of the reported individual. Some of these individuals include teachers and instructors. Some testimonials are anonymous, based on each individual's desire. If you at any point feel like you need support or are listening to these statements, please remove yourself from the room and contact Ulster County Mobile Mental Health, didn't you reach at the following number? One eight four four two seven seven four eight two zero. These testimonials we will share today should not serve as direct reflection of people or events, for rather seek to broaden systemic issues that play in Highland. They are not meant to point fingers or create finger, for rather exhibit ways in which we can bring Highland's experience for all. Structures of oppression develop on individuals, the lovely cinder block walls of Highland High and the town of Lloyd. However, it is yours to read, to make the school a place of learning, learning about all narratives, experiences, injustices, and successes. Making it a place where students are to feel safe, equal, and heard. I hope you take time to reflect on these testimonials, and reflect on the recommendations we are making to the board, because of course, we will be staying here forever. Thank you.
If you would like, you can remove your mask if you've got a social distance, so you're more comfortable with the mask, or whatever.
On, on, mask. Good evening. My name is Celia Vajani, and I graduated from Highland High School in Highland Central. However, my time in the Highland Central School District is not quite long, so it is a bunch of criticism from faculty and from my peers. In my junior year of high school, I wrote a paper on cultural representation, a topic that is personal, but also meaningful, that the many people have had the same experience for us. At the end of the class, a teacher pulled me aside and assumed that I was wrong, that the document I just made was incorrect, and she completely invalidated everything I just said, even me. This would have been many incidents if I had known this teacher, who was widely regarded as liberal, open-minded, and understanding. And other instances, in my freshman year in my boarding class, a classmate threw me a towel, and confronted my teacher and made fun of my class. The teacher's lawyer, even in the midst, was like rushing to the doctor, and the doctor, hey, it's not so easy like that. This would never have gone out of touch like that in the paper. In a very convincing sense, I felt, safe enough to bring something to your attention, influenced by a specific quarterback's answers, but it consistently dashed, and told a little bit of you, that this was just regular childish answer, or they were cruel to the person, and ultimately, by the way, nothing magical. No apology, no punishment, no change in any way. I wish I could say that we still have to raise our eyes and roll. I wish I could say that maybe I was being a bit mad, or close to rushing to a comment made, but these are high-stakes events that we know of, so it's a large function of how we're being successful in our school. And, uh, this testimony is a kind of a challenge we need to have. And therefore, in other instances, I was involved in a high level of internet during Black Christmas. Every morning, the school played a song for Black Christmas. A girl who liked hearing music, so she posted on the South Texas way that Black people didn't even know about Black Christmas. And she hated it, so she hides in a simple song every morning because of it. But it's worth the school attention, so that is a good one. We made a connection that never could have happened, and it absolutely mattered. Just so that they would say, that they did something to this girl, but it did absolutely nothing. And the show is a complete and absolute, full-scale defense, and quote, that is the longest testimony I've ever heard. I quote, multiple girls wearing Confederate flags on hats, shirts, clowning flags proudly on their vehicles, from Highland Central School District, not the weapons of the enemy. They allowed it every day for four years, which leads me to believe that it's something each senior has to understand. They allowed it every single day, and it continues to support values of natural and progress. Our principals and security were more worried about girls wearing hood tops and kids waking in the bathroom than they were about racial microaggressions by the family of their brothers. They thought it sets high advantages in the wrong places and disciplines in the world. I witnessed a physical fight in one of my classes in the high school, and this is how it went. Sitting in class, I met a fellow student who was white, this student was also a white, swans her white backpack and passing along books by the way. This was another student that, a powerbomb, a beautiful. The black and white student wanted to be a physical fight in another class because of it. While both were present, the black student got the longest suspension to start the fight, when the white group was involving racists in the middle of the battle. The white student was allowed to return to school, no problem, just a couple of days later, still proudly discerning his success. And quote, that is a testimony from an awareness, and I quote, two girls intentionally locked and made multiple jokes throughout the next class, and said all these people are going to come out of the room. As I slipped up and confronted these girls, I laughed a lot. None of the girls stopped crying, not safe, confronted by the girls who called the story. They continued to complain and make their signature protest. The middle school's principals insisted that I was being sensitive and delicate on feelings. On that, I was spoken to a group of boys from my class. These particular group of boys have always stated racist comments, and all of them, including teachers, would say negative about you. As we started working, these boys started saying their neutral comments. As I slipped up and said how it was wrong and hurtful, one of them started to say, you people are insensitive, and repeated, kill for me. Then somehow, I began to do some uncolored statements. After our class, I was told from a form at the store often, as I sounded adult talking about the As I sounded adult talking about the situation, she tried to tell me that I didn't mean anything, and it just mattered. One day, back in school, my brother seemed upset and was agreeing himself. I also walked wrong and started to discuss our pride. He confessed to me earlier, clearly important to family, told him that he's a nasty uncle, told him to do whatever they say, because he was destined, and I gave him my little hand. My brother is a very inspired and soon to grow. The initial information was upsetting, so I never, never want to tell him, and stuff like this happened to them. My sister-in-law, apparently felt a bit bad. My sister also had a group of girls who, she was discussing because of the fact that I was here. These events happened during their time at the other high school. There were a couple of fights, my students and I, the missionaries, to school. This has made me and my friends feel extremely unsafe, and it is upsetting. The school usually allows these students to learn and develop skills, though. The matter is, is based on a completely corrupt and racist society and code. And that is a testimony from enormous testimony from my students. So, high-stakes, low-risk, jumping, and it is very easy for us to look back at all the time wrong and contact our shortcomings. Your notice now is unredone. How we will progress and what changes we make will help facilitate a healthy, safe, better environment for our students.
Hello, my name is Gianna Bora, and I'm from the class of 2020. Today, I will be reading three anonymous testimonies. The first is from a student in the class of 2019. While I've never felt or experienced racism, which is my privilege as a white female, I think not many times where I've seen it at Highland Central School District. For starters, many of my former peers have felt the need to wear the Confederate flag in school or on their cars in the parking lot, a flag that symbolizes hatred and racism toward black people and people of color. This not only can offend students of color, but make them feel unsafe and unwanted in their own school, a place where they are supposed to feel safe and protected. Although the high school and the middle school address schools in place to control other students, where I have not once seen any action taken in place to control the promotion of the Confederate flag in school. Along with this, the amount of white students I have heard taking N-word throughout my time at the Highland Central School District is outrageous. And not only do they say N-word, but they say it in front of teachers and then face no consequences. While Highland Central School District has some loving and brilliant minds teaching us, there are some educators who need to get educated themselves. One time in particular, a teacher of mine tried to sell the class that reverse racism was real. She claimed to have witnessed racism toward white people and proceeded to say, "Isn't it wrong that way too?" However, there is no such thing as reverse racism. You do not be racist toward white people, because us white people have never been oppressed. So it is impossible for us to experience it firsthand. While I don't believe this comment was meant to be perflerable, that's exactly what it ended up being. By her saying that her high school class, to her high school class, it tells those kids that is something they should believe, which does nothing but hurt the education system at Highland Central School District. These examples are just a few of the stories and experiences myself and other students at Highland have witnessed or even gone through. The next is from a student who would like to remain fully anonymous. During teachers, during teachings on the Holocaust, a lot of the staff I looked on, looked on as students told me that I would be murdered, and which of my friends would kill me if I were alive then. I was inappropriately addressed during multiple different classes at my time in Highland as to explaining what Jewish holidays meant, which would normally be fine, but I was thanked for giving kids a day off on the honor before. In addition, I was asked as for practice, and a student late Kenny's on the dock and frequently dropped change to see if I'd turn my head because of the stereotype of how Jewish people love money. A fellow Jewish student had taken pictures of whom she thought was a friend, but he made the location on the photo accurate. This is only what I can remember best, but there have been other incidents as well. Lastly, anonymous from the class of 2026 said, "I have gotten called the N-word by one specific kid various times. In class, that kid also made a racist comment while we were learning about slavery. I was told by the sub to sit down because I was overreacting, and was told if I didn't sit down, I would be sent to the office." Please take accountability for the actions by your students and staff. Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Olivia. Today, I'm from the class of 2020. Today, I'll be reading the testimonies from the head of the museum of classes. This one is from a girl who's been in a high school for class of 2023. When we were in school, people asked them the next day if they were immigrants. Was told not to wear black makeup colors because of money, dad, and work. This kid was saying negative advice, and I wanted to put him in the state, made it to the festival. Many friends worried about what he said, because they were questioning. The officer wasn't a big deal because money's a must. The teacher had said privately, saying she understands how this can be done. Because she never was, because she never was wrong. Listen to what kids say. We shouldn't let anyone get what they're saying for her or if they're right. This isn't 1930, you guys should teach everyone where it's for a certain reason. They're trying to do stupid presentations on those who are not good at it. In middle school, I grew up home fine because I wanted to go to a new school with more black students. No one should ever have to go to Iraq. You should also teach the truth and Black history for once. I shouldn't have to learn more about Black history on TikTok and X too. Next, I'll be reading from Olivia's report to me. They're from the class of 2020. This is one example of them, calling the last victim a senior anti-spiritualist at home before the war. This year, I was one of the girls for studies. I decided to wear my natural hair and hairband. This is already something I would not have done normally since my parents' style was practically a big difference from something I was seeing as a white, super thirteen, just in my hair. I was walking down the hallway in two classes, and I felt someone pull my hair from behind. Two younger white girls bent away from me, saying something along the lines of, "So what is this?" I saw her wanting to run, and I ended up having a conversation with her that I'm not putting her hands on either, especially about her and the black community. This short conversation took place and found the fact that we were at twenty zero at ten. She didn't ask any questions about what happened, even though she clearly wasn't aware of the same, the number, this is unacceptable. My last reading was to verify that my son was particularly called a black, essay, illegal, immigrant by friends who considered this joking. It caused them much embarrassment, but as much as I had changed his speed out, he'd say that he's most opposed in front of teachers and never with regards. So he felt that they were really funny, as it was really disturbing. Even I like the social attire in this store, girl, terry, and even stands physically with a beard. I've been called a lot twice, I've had my hair pulled in the hallways by black, light-skinned, and black girls. Real and fake, they're joking around, they would say, "Is it real, or am I not wearing it today?" Even if they seem so little, actually very disrespectful. It's an invasion of personal space and actually very embarrassing and uncomfortable. I've gotten made fun of for wearing a bonnet and a blue hat to school. They would take off my hat and put on when perceived to act ghetto. I will knock you on, not because it's funny, but it was very uncomfortable that they were comfortable with it. I've heard the word nigger and the N-word are out loud more times than I remember. And when I have told them not to say it, they would nod their ear along and try to argue that it was normal okay. The staff didn't do anything about this either. The people of white boys told, there is a group of white boys telling about black girls, and I was like, "So..." to go pick cotton, jokingly, and the black boys was walking along with them. This is a problem that is so normal here, that even the people of color don't say anything like Zebra. They're not going to talk like trauma, no matter the context behind what they're saying, it's the principle of the word or phrase. Anytime we've got threats, say no about LGBTQ rights or discrimination or ignorance in school or science. There were a few incidents, including, um, a baby's very being pulled out by a teacher to take off her grandma's shoes and give her, according to her, shoes to the gym class. When we went to the office about it, we were silent. I tried to have them make a speech, not telling these names or putting one down respectfully and orderly, and I was still silent, going to school. The real was my situation, when she posted about how Black History Month was very, um, We tried to, even a couple people tried to go to the office and speak about it, um, no one ever got back to us about, um, having a meeting with her, we tried to talk to her and educate her ourselves, and tried to look for an apology, you know, and we didn't get any contact back about any of that. And we proceeded to have a, an assembly, basically saying to just leave it alone or face the consequences. Ben said, "I hope you did well today." I witnessed white kids, some who are children of or relatives of the South, who are moved seats away from and/or make comments about black people. This situation is not about race. I walk down the hallway getting talked about judging my appearance, um, my outfit, by I was very professional and respectful, but she came to me saying, "That's not what happened," and proceeded to, you're not doing anything about the situation, and I was very upset to them. And again, I was silent. This seems like no matter how I talk or address, I will never, I will never be seen, and I will stand and pray. Instead of making a call, we are talking all the way in there. We shouldn't be teaching kids how to speak up about their problems and this is a people who may not feel whatever they do. Silencing us is only making it worse, by making us fall off our issues to build up rage. Think about the rioters' field. The rioters are the voices of the unheard. The people who are so damaged in their part's society, all they see is red, getting no way, shape, or form into that of it. We will silence for too long, and I cannot have any meaning. The first step we can take is by educating the people. Instead of letting them slide, we need to hold everyone accountable, no matter how small an incident it is. If it is discriminatory towards someone's race, gender, or sexual purposes. We need to push the normalization of our Russian in the school, and we need to push the normalization of zero color transgressiveness. We need more diverse staff to teach about Black culture, and history and English teachers need to teach more about current events. Staff should also be held accountable for not reporting this behavior. We also, we need black counselors and black teachers in all Highland schools. Black kids are hit with color to have someone closely to talk to about their problems that a white person may be able to understand. We are surrounded by very prominent teachers of color. We need to advertise that we are trying to improve the good teachers of color, that we are working together to try and create a more diverse environment in our community.
I'm going to just say look at them, and I am from the class of 2020. Today, I will be sharing two testimonials, the first is my own. Me and Julia now, that's me, and I have a class from a community of gay and transgender youth. Throughout the halls, I would call names like Tar, Porch Monkey, Slave, and many more. Not only that, but I have a black hair rainbow, but it's because it's too rough, slave life are not like anyone else's. And this, to me, is absolutely disgusting, even being called a nigger just because of my skin color. No one should be treated like this because of their skin tone. I took pride in being a black woman. I don't go around calling whites crackle. I don't go around calling skin sticks. So why, as me as a black woman, should be called a nigger? All people have done is make excuses because of freedom of speech. The like said before, there is a difference between hate speech and freedom of speech. We have kids walking around with the Confederate flag, but once someone from the LGBTQ community tries to express themselves, it's so-called offensive. Being in that school, in this school, I feel as if I'm fighting a war with anyone, especially when it comes to the adults. Even then, the adults are just as tired as the kids. The racism needs to stop. No one should have to feel insecure about their skin color. The next testimonial is from a net, a anonymous student in the class of 2020. In my career of Highland High School, systematic racism has been present, whether it's because of my mo, whether it's because I know intervention as core, or just don't belong in school. They pay more attention to them, especially, especially if they do something wrong or areas, a white person will do it, or if they're failing the class, they will do that as much. They don't push them as much, they give them a permit to go talk to the principal. They give us, they give us the wrong kind of potential. The main reason this police, but as a district during the school day, is because of people of color. It's unfair. Island High School is a whole different avenue, of, avenue of innocent men, because they treat them differently than the rest. Thank you for your time.
Hello. Hello. My name is Jennifer, and I'm from the class of 2020. I'll begin with my own testimony. The one thing that stuck out to me the most after being white and never being treated as this, is I visited the film from serious debt in Washington, which is also American history. The things I learned in college, I would never even mention in my, in my courses throughout my time at the CIC. We learned about redlining, closer ways past, self-care, self, black walk, free, come back out, the fellow people of Georgia, Florida, and South Carolina, who average movement on Saturday, which is not American history, but is still in there. This is just the tip of the iceberg, many places covered up in family. The Black History was covered with watered-down bricks and with extreme, easily rid of the white students. We've been waiting for this year to reach us, there is also the Confederate Black History program, which goes back to 1994. There is also a white male in the class of phase seventeen, who threatened to go on school, had been president and called in case of a rebellion. While Black and Black students are higher, certainly with the human purpose. Also, the students who are also in the class, in the second grade, got into a fight, because they were white and white. Said, we're called the Black History Committee. This calls for fight between them. After this fight, the students, who did start a personal feud, is no repercussion by Black students from the center. I also have, I've never had a fight happen to anyone in my time. Call me from the modest seat. I, as one of the students, have lost my pride and honor. In the entirety of other lanes, of other street, other white students that are being made for granted, that came for us, and the racial jokes, not indifferent, kind of right of, which we need to count. Things even be racist, coming from books about the Black community, and our special Things even be racist, coming from books about the Black community, and our special Black community. In classrooms and in times, we close talks and use teachers. Even that, these students are not only unafraid to be voting racist, but they think it's something like that, that needs to see a different statement. Another student prepared a form, passed a class of students, certainly remark, I countless racist books have made out new dating and blackmail, and I assume you will. They're driving people aside, and behind their mother, etc., from their students. Lastly, apparently victim making mom said, One of my first experiences with my childhood, I had a question about students, and I came to the mayor of Carolina, because one day, I know, I saw the voice of your brother, so, so good, and that he couldn't play their interest in the law. My child has been asked questions about why she's so blonde, was she wanting to lose weight? I had to call a teacher, he said, "Dying slave" because of the hair. Another student referred to my side, my daughter said nothing is said by the teacher at the end of the week. And I called the teacher, he stayed in his office, he didn't dress, he referred the teacher, and he did come back home.
My name is Kamulus, I'm from the class of twenty twenty. Today, I will be reading a testimony from an anonymous student. The first, the first testimony was in the class of twenty twenty, she wrote, I've been seeing a family since two thousand nine, and I've seen a lot of women in this world. And I'm looking at this shirt, it depends on what it exists, depends on different colors you wear. And they don't, they don't care about the color, they don't care about the color of the shirt, many kids. This shirt very also sharply told the concern from the on the way back. I was never having the words in full, in my mind, and for all the reasons, I was definitely concerned, it's a result of it. Teacher models have definitely said, "The doctor do it, it's a good thing." And sadly, there are solutions, and I think it's very diverse, because we're happening to be alone, and I'm doing it for the purpose. So my sophomore school, I've been experiencing a lot of things, like the corporate kids, the annual screening, for a while. The faculty shares strong opinions, but they didn't get educated, or informed. For those certain people, that black people didn't say, "Black students," the decision on the online issues and results, and social impact, is still less than we paid for. It can come to be surrounding, or that I need to break problems, so to act. Sadly, this so bad privacy, personally being a white student, I've never known how to do this stuff. But as I become more aware, there are many teachers who are taught. The faculty is mainly worried, it's not easy to work hard, and have people understand the children. That is shows that I have an edge as a student, who works out. Not once in my eleven years of hiring, have I ever had a teacher who is not Asian or Indian. It can drag on business companies, in this world, the ability of people to go to work. Especially moments where it's so life-changing to read, seven plus hours a day, and with nine minutes left, but that's shit crap, man. There are some who may have been on the same issue in the past, please tell me. As a workman, I have never experienced, especially against racist speakers. I was welcomed with open eyes, even when I made mistakes. And I haven't answered the teacher, they've worked you off as a criminal offender. It was always accepted by the owner of the place, but it was not acceptable, and I'm black, and I'm trying to have the same effect. Many times, those workmates provided, and they suspension, for even worse, of school. And even this instance, faculty were worried about black students, while we're in the black school system. They've been not fair, if they're black, just as long as they're not Jewish or Italian. Every student, even faculty in the class, who don't mean a sight, to go around telling the W B S guys, shoot the school off. While these ethics were expressed, they were ultimately not respected. While the district allowed for some of these sets to be so serious, that gives us a combination. For black students who are guardians of white, would firmly be expelled. That is the statement that we must keep as a consultant. The thoughts that, and our immediate reality, they of course have been enough to blame. While most of us trust with American culture, or A C policy, others show up representing the Black community. The Confederate flag, which is a symbol of slavery and white supremacy, and the future. What kind of message did that send to us, who are colored, primarily with black students? How it also showed a lot that hates them, because that's what it is up to me for, to be created around the goals we set for. Those that trust me, and fully intend for, for racist teenagers who quickly believe that we're not ourselves. Too many teachers show one tattoo, too many questions help us out, so, once upon a time, I was students. And I'd like to add, you guys make me really hard from racism, but it appears, I assume, because this period is actually a conflict of some kind of that, inside of us.
Hi, my name is Lexero, I'm from the class of twenty seventeen. Today, I'm sharing a selection of testimonials, working in middle school at the time, my teacher were honestly the worst. For me, one of the people at early Marceline Premier, one amazing point, a math teacher, when I was giving my suspension, he put his hat back in the locker, and he was going, "I wish I could do it again." On a day, another girl in the class, she was wearing her hat on, and also told us to stay it off, and we never got the same punishment. There are multiple times where I was called to the office, so it's still being twisted, when other girls walked out wearing the same thing. It seemed as if they knew just the target, because it could increase our own friendships, and also new contact coming. There was also a new teacher who would barely throw chairs, and yet he was never fired discipline, so my sister had another teacher. It took someone here to listen to boring class, for him to get in trouble and fired. In high school, I was forced to participate in a debate, where I had to defend the Confederate flag. When this announcement was made, another girl participated in the speech, and lacking in amusement, because we're one of the only black girls in the class that's ever seen someone who's so racist. When I said I did not want to participate, I was told that, things like this happen, and I'll be positioned where I have to wait on topics like this. I knew when to polish, be a nice member. I would hear many students in the hall saying the N-word, and I have, and I would have to see classmates coming to school with the Confederate flag, saying it up, blacking their backs. Another prominent member, was from my white peer's side, to try and argue as to why they should be able to say the N-word, and why it's no sense that only black people are allowed to. Top it off, one of the most common issues in this whole district, is that for eleven years of being in this environment, I never had a single black teacher. A student teacher in middle school does not count. The following is from an anonymous student in the class of twenty twenty three. I experienced multiple experiences with students in Highland High School, being racist, whether it's saying the N-word, or mocking a person of color. Friends of mine in Highland High School also experienced homophobia for being themselves, and the teacher remains to work at Highland High School, making the students of the LGBTQ community feel uncomfortable and judged within this school district. Also, I've gone into a problem with a student, and then a guidance counselor tries to gas up some Jews who might say I call them white boy milkshake, since Jews thought you called me a nigger, which was disgusting, you know, in history, but not in word. Students also did not get serious punishments, and continued to say the N-word. I've seen teachers in history class, sorry, I've seen teachers in classrooms, do not bat an eye when you're students of the N-word, now in the derogatory term, you're a black student. Faculty in Highland High School really needs to consider how they deal with discrimination, because us black and LGBTQ plus are the minority in this school. And it's hard to say something, you know, about ten of us in this school, how you feel about people. I'd also like to add that it's honestly astonishing that now you guys are adding textbooks to discuss black history, because I really need to have it in grade seventeen, especially during the twenty sixteen election, which seemed that everyone wants to be put in racist, so, thank you.
My name is Vashin, I'm from the class of twenty two. Today, I will be sharing some of your stuff, of your students, of testimonials, and you can learn. I'm gonna start with when I was in elementary school. Students would make fun of mine and other students that committed crimes. And also, when I was in kindergarten, a girl found out I was eating chicken, she wasn't allowed to eat anything. Now, the community, white boys in my grade, told my Mexican friends to go back to their country, and they were asked if they were illegal, and I said, "My Mexican friend, they're washing off." And I said, "Kids will make fun of my parents' absence, they will mock the things they wear," and I just put it aside. For example, is at lunch, I explained my feelings on racism, and my all weight from me. I told them, "You can't be racist toward white people," and they started fighting me. A teacher even came into the conversation, compared my students, that we're racist, because we're not racist. Now, I'll open my mouth to this. So last year, when I was in ninth grade, a white girl in my class, seemed to be meeting my Muslim friend, a terrorist. My friend and I were talking about how it's annoying that people of color are always randomly selected in the airport. The white girl then said, "Well, you guys shouldn't be checked, because of your terrorists, and white identity thing." Me and my friend both told the white girl, "She didn't grow up in that, what she said was extremely disrespectful." I do want to say that three months later, she did not go to us, and apologized, and she wrote a book about education, for the nation, and everything to come out of this. This year, when I'm in tenth grade, numerous friends of mine have said, "Wait in racist things to me," and have another member of the group. They justify all of this by saying that they're sheltered, and that they never learned about this. Um, also, students were clearly going on the halls, wearing Confederate flag on their backpack. I don't understand how that, how that's accepted or all. Also, in the hall, because I'm a thirteen-year-old black girl, and I'm not a black girl, but there's nothing wrong with being black, and called my friends from grade, because they were protesting. Their social media also experienced some racism, and I was a freshman, I had a person in their lesson, they said, "Do you dedicate industries that hurt any new people do that?" And they also asked if I could borrow five hundred of their students. I didn't do this in a testimonial, but they also asked me about any of its positive future, and if I was connected to it. They also called me a copy, which is a derogatory term, because it's a copy sign, I am not a copy sign, but that's not good.
Hi, my name is Leah Thomas, um, and I'm from the class of twenty twenty. Today, I'll be reading testimonies to Highland students, and we didn't read any. I've been questioned multiple times, not only by students, but by teachers as well, if my hair is real, or if it's a wave, or a perm, or a weave. I've been compared to a poodle because of my hair. My friends and I were labeled monkey by a student. I've heard students that, that are not, uh, people of color, use the N-word, and teachers say nothing about it, but laugh. People who's used to look at me, along with other black students in class, and over the history of slaves we brought up, or even anything that has to do with the past or present upbringings of black people, as if we have something to say about it, that a teacher even won't say. What type of education are you expecting from a child? We know just as much as you do, especially as such a unique. It's hard coming to a predominantly white school, when you're a person of color, and feeling so left out. It feels like a lot of design, you know teachers who go to, to understand the shit that you've been through, or are going through. Teachers, but ask me about black history, while also teaching me about it. They look to me for American fusion, how? We need teachers to open their eyes, to understand that the things that they've said, but, to understand that the things that they not only said, but confining the school ground, will no longer be acceptable. We have a new generation walking through those doors, and the things that are current in school can be and are damaging for you. You need to understand the difference between stating opinions and stating facts. Protect your students, no matter how different your views are on topics. You're here to teach you, teach them the correct things, and not within the history books. Those books are whitewashed, and it doesn't tell the entire truth. Let the people of color know how we're back. Maybe even see, if you can get a justice counselor of color, so students can go out to somebody who understands the struggles in this school and in this country. It's not always teaching when your skin's colored, and the students don't know it's not somebody you can talk to. We need people to stop students when they say things of a racist nature, or if they're overtly racist. Don't laugh at all, because it's not a joke, it's our everyday lives. Defend us, compare for us, so you can do your own. Next, I'll be reading an anonymous admission from the class of twenty twenty. Some of my first experiences started when, for instance, in Highland. Unlike many of the other students who actually grew up in Highland, I transferred to middle school my freshman year in the city. It was a really hard transition, as I came from a high school that was extremely diverse, to now attending a high school that is very low diversity, and is predominantly white. It was odd, and I was very uncomfortable since my first day. I had so many people constantly point out my accent, as well as many people making assumptions about me, based around from. Although these slowly died off as the months passed on, I spoke into other kids who have transferred from other similar areas, who felt the exact same way as me when coming to Highland. Another thing is that I openly blazed the N-word in Highland, and ever since coming out, I have literally dealt with countless forms of microaggression from so many students. When I worked with us, I was a student, an older trans Highland, who would continuously throw around an F swear, and even Ed swear, because I knew that my father was a person of color. It anger me my core, but I always kept quiet, because I felt like nobody was going to listen to me. Even during sports, I'd get singled out and treated weirdly, due to the fact that I'm gay. When I became the class president, so many people used the excuse that it was mainly because I was gay, and that it would be neither Highland, and I've gotten countless arguments with people in our school, who have invalidated my sexuality multiple times. Those select few kids are known to be homophobic, and saying things like, "Crown boys shouldn't exist," etc., and comparing a rainbow flag to other flags of hate, and trying to make you feel bad for being gay. And these kids are never called out, but instead applauded. How it opens up a space for many to share opposing viewpoints? What many of the faculty don't realize is that for many to share opposing viewpoints, is that, yes, so many kids in Highland are supportive, accepting, loving, etc., and there are many teachers in Highland, who go out of their way to provide a safe space for everyone. But there are some kids who attend, that continue to use derogatory swears to interest others, and are now ready to show their hatred of this space for certain aspects of society, whether it be in person or on social media. I'm graduated this year, but I won't change. I don't want kids that will listen to violence in school, such as the Spanish-speaking kids like you mean, many from places like Mexico, Puerto Rico, Colombia, etc., who have to hear kids' language said in Italian, and return to their countries, which is very common. Change in some form needs to happen, in different time.
My name is Nicole Wilk, and I'm from the class of twenty nine. Today, I'll be sharing selection testimonials, including my own. When I was in seventh grade, in their chorus, we were singing a Jewish song for a concert. While practicing singing this song, one student asked if we were allowed to sing the hymn song. This led to the then-teacher to go on a long tangent about respecting the army for fighting against the Muslims. He then proceeded to talk about how he couldn't understand how the Muslims, been preached from a book of peace, which was very insensitive and ignorant, he was said, and needless to say, I would never have gotten about that moment, nor would I anytime soon. The next testimonials were a student from the class of twenty twenty three. Numerous names have been redacted from the stadium to ensure the student's safety. In that box, there is boy, redacted. He was talking about black people, and then he continued to say the N-word loudly, clear, from the teacher, redacted. I did not say anything, because I was scared to speak up, but looking back at it now, I should have gotten this redacted. Another thing is, the call with black girls in other communities, that intrigued differently, with what they wear, and how they wear certain things. I remember one time I was in gym class, and there was a national chain up there, so it was a state outfit I wore to school. I had on a slitted top top, mind you, I have curves, and my body is more mature than an average fourteen-year-old. Coach redacted, proceeded to call me over, and tell me how my, how my top was, and how it should have been, and how it should have shown my stomach, and is not appropriate for gym. I then looked around and seen many girls that are not curvy, wearing tube tops, crop tops, often shoulder tops, tops, etc. They were also skinnier than I was, so they did not get as much swagger as I did, which is not fair at all. Lastly, I will be speaking to one of my curvy friends, who had experienced this voice of school. She was in art class, having a conversation with her friends, the boy proceeded to be nosy, and he said, "You can't speak up for yourself because you're black." She then stood up for herself. She then stood up for herself, as she should, and pulled him off and got really angry. After class, she was going to gym. When she got there, she told Coach Redaktive what happened. She said, to the coach, "He probably didn't mean for it to come out that way. It was probably an accident." An accident? Are you kidding me? That is a grown teenager who's aware of what comes out is not on the front. There's no speech for that comment. That also shows we cannot go to any teacher without defending the person who is ignorant, who is bitter. Another thing is that in the hallway, there are running online people saying that I'm a white person. The teachers do not do anything. Overall, this school needs to do better and be more aware about what their students are saying. They do not just be sensible to attention. They ignore and slap on their wrist. The next testimonial I'm sharing is on behalf of my friend, Jeremy Gibson, from the class of twenty nine. Who is unable to make it today, he wrote. I've had numerous experiences with black students saying that I'm a white person. I've heard it both with a hard R and the A after this. I've also found that many minority students, especially black students, have been punished more severely for offenses than my students. During fights involving students of different races, such as Mexicans, I've noticed that black students get suspended longer and are typically blamed for starting fights. In my early in B years, I noticed that students were allowed to wear clothing accessories that had colored flags as to how they went to sleep in their bed. This is deeply offensive, being a half-black student whose grandmother lived on the second page and thought harder of the civil rights movement. I've also been harassed and bullied for my sexual orientation in high school. I've been called a homophobic slur for just walking down the hall. I just want to say, I've had, I've experienced more racist experiences, but due to that one being more, like, openly, like, racially racist, I think that was the most important one. And I'm not blaming you guys, I'm just saying I feel we should be more aware of these situations. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Emily Pearson, I'm from the class of twenty eighteen. Today, I'll be sharing anonymous testimonies from students as well as a personal comment. The first is from a student of the class of twenty fifteen. She wrote, "In elementary school, I would bring necklaces to lunchtime. And white classmates would often say very nasty things about the foods that I would see, all under the careful eyes of lunch monitors to stay quiet every time. In fifth grade, some white boys in my class made fun of a quiet brown girl for the way she acted and the way she dressed. I V, there was absolutely no reason to be making fun of her. They did not make fun of me in front of the usualy because I was welcome with them." I personally felt overt racism at one moment when I was on school, was a middle school, and a fellow white classmate aggressively told me to go back to India. Another time, I bore witness to a fellow classmate who experienced overt racism. It occurred in advanced math in a grade, and my peer was told, "Go back to India," by several students. The student then went on to tell me to stay in the United States so that I could help him with homework. Nothing was said by the teacher at the time to call the overt racism when there was a frame of class full of seemingly advanced students. The peer I mentioned above was repeatedly bullied throughout school just because they were a Harvardian student who happened to be brown. At the time, I had been in high school, being a Brown Harvardian student who wanted to do well and rid of themselves was seen as strange, even the threat to white lives and violence in the head of the area. I felt this way myself. Although this level of bullying was settled with me, I now even try my best to hide my brownness and over to fit in. I and other Black people of color friends pretend to be beneficial as many instances of fellow white classmates referring to brown Black POCs as weird and gross, all under oath. I'd like to believe that the fears were raised to me and my other Black POC friends were shared and grown after leaving Hyland. But that's a thing. If they did mature and become more accepting of other cultures, i.e. now races, they had to leave Hyland in order to do so. This feels like a fundamental issue with Hyland Central School District as well as the town itself. As an educational body, it is H T S D's responsibility to educate students for popular versions of history to diverge from imperialistic and white versions of history, as well as to actively call out and punish racist behaviors that run rampant in other schools. The next testimonial is from a student in the class of twenty twenty one. There have been horrible things that have been missed, but two stand out in particular. One girl who posted during a black history, some very hurtful, vulgar, and derogatory things. She posted and said these things for all to see and even when as far as said at Black History Month. Countless students visited the schools and gathered in families. Many students expected a punishment or a college. The only thing that was done is the girl who did this was given security. The school believed she was in danger from many fits of color because of what she said was ridiculous. No punishment was ever given. Another incident was in class, a young white male who was more conservative decided to scream the N-word with a hard R in class. No punishment was given either, and many found that very disappointing as it shows the staff of the school do not seem to care. Could you mind this one? In the first testimony I read, a line stuck with me was what she said after leaving Hyland. They ensure and learn to be more accepting of others. As a white female, this resonates with me because I had to leave Hyland to realize how many racist acts of behavior were so often overlooked. I had to educate myself in the matter, and I know that I am not the only one. We should be able to trust, we should be able to trust that Hyland will teach their students on these matters, but it starts with the ones that are authority, teaching themselves first. Thank you.
Hello, I'm in my class of twenty eighteen. I truly wish today I was here in better circumstances, but the truth is I'm not. As I'm sure you all are aware, that a few weeks ago, I wrote an email calling for the district to make a statement and promise to do better at educating our students on systemic racism, white privilege, and police brutality, as well as offer more support to our black students. Although you all released a statement, I was sad to see that there was no clear action included and no actual resources provided, rather just a generic statement. A statement cannot erase over four hundred years of racism and definitely will not fix any of the problems you just heard. And I truly hope all of you are listening, listening to every word, every testimony, every experience. And that is only just a preview. We only got so many, a little bit, just under a hundred testimonies. I can't even imagine the other stories that students have experienced in this high school, elementary school, and middle school. The truth is simple. Systematic racism is real, white privilege is real, and police brutality is real. And all are real within our community and our school district. It is time for the Hyland Central School District to acknowledge that they have a debt of the past and commit to doing better. Thus, we have come today to present to the board a list of recommendations that we believe will just begin to get our district on track to make a more inclusive and safe environment for all students. We understand that many of our requests may not be required by law. However, we believe Hyland should start to set the standards and not wait till they need to be required to do better. Just as New Palts High School did by canceling the last two weeks of classes for all of their high school students to have conversations on race and African-American. That is commitment, and we need to commit. Ultimately, we believe that to follow through on the commitment of the Hyland Board of Education to strive and engage our community in providing quality education by lending our experiences and perspectives that will positively affect the future of each and every student within the needs of the community, we must work to adopt the following. One, administrators, teachers, and support staff need to participate in racial sensitivity, bias recognition, and anti-racist training. This training this training needs to be conducted by an external group. For example, I'm doing racism. Further, administrators need to participate in separate and more extensive training to ask to know how to navigate issues of race, discrimination, and exclusion that happen under their authority. This includes teachers' use of racial slurs in the classroom setting, which multiple students reported. There should be no use of racial slurs regardless of the context. Sports coaches and teams must also participate in trainings that will be administered compulsory. These trainings must occur annually. Second, an ad hoc advisory committee to the board must be created to evaluate and support the district's evolving racial equity initiative in accordance with the Board of Education's curfew and legal authority. While the board is legally empowered to enact policy changes that shape a more equitable environment, the integrity of these changes depends on the affirmative and direct involvement of those with insight into and expertise around inequity. A failure to address this important issue represents an application of your sworn oath and violation of the district's guiding principles. This board shall focus on the immediate priorities as indicated below. It will consist of a Board of Education member, community members, current middle and high school students, instructional staff, non-instructional staff, and free administrators. Third, organize an annual speaker series with notable black speakers that not only discuss issues of race and equity and the manifestation of microaggressions and bullying, but also act to inspire students of color. With few teachers and staff members of color, students of color do not see people who reflect their identities in positions of power within this district. Seminars about white privilege must also be institutionalized so as to inform the predominantly white student body. Four, inviting successful speakers of all races, creed, gender, and genders, and sexual identities to speak to school for one day is, is not, excuse me, for one day is insufficient. The school needs to actively participate in anti-racist teachings in the classroom setting. We also encourage the creation of an African-American or Black history course, as seen at New Palts High School. Five, a more intersectional curriculum is insufficient. Hyland must also seek more diverse titles, not only in their faculty, but also their staff. This includes a mental health counselor of color. Six, institutionalize semi-annual and ongoing community conversations and workshops to analyze data and feedback from students of color and their families on their perceptions of race in Hyland, their needs, and instances of discrimination slash targeting. Seven, the school must issue a public statement and stance on racial equity. This statement should be evaluated by racial equity and inclusion ad hoc community, as previously mentioned. Hyland's website makes clear that issues of equity are not a priority. There are no equal opportunity employer messages commonly displayed on the website. The only information regarding race, equity, and discrimination directs you to a New York State website on Dasa and Dorka. Evidently, this school is not committed to addressing these issues. Thus, administrators and the Board of Education must lead by example in changing the culture at Hyland by publicly displaying these messages. Eight, adopt an explicit policy on racial slurs and teacher reporting of their use. This cannot be addressed on a case-by-case basis. There needs to be direct policies in place for teachers to enforce that combat and normalize use of racially charged language. This must be a direct and clear policy on language and use this must be a direct and clear policy on language use and reporting. Nine, an external review of curricula must be conducted by an accreditation body. Internal evaluations of curricula by the various teachers who develop the curricula are inadequate and brittle with personal bias. All classes should be reexamined to ensure that curricula in every subject is guided by intersectionality. We implore that this shift includes the cutting of A P European history in favor of A P World history. Hyland Eurocentric curriculum that focuses on the colonizers and non-colonized is exclusionary and aids at uplifting values rooted in white supremacy. Ten, Columbus Day practices and messaging must be replaced with Indigenous Peoples' Day. For this is so ingrained, this message must also be incorporated into the classroom. Eleven, a review of the code of conduct as it relates to issues of race, gender identity, and sexual identity must be administered. This includes a breakdown of dress code violations on the basis of race and gender identity. We must eliminate policies on hats that are explicitly discriminatory. Further, the nonspecific language of the dress code as it pertains to vulgar dress is far too vague and leaves immense latitude for the targeting of students of color. This review should be done by the racial equity and inclusion ad hoc community as well. Thank you.
Good, I have the next G O I to the board members. Of the eleven recommendations that be read or eager for the faculty to receive, as are most of the testimonials that they read, as soon as we do go back to the practice, the particular level of recommendations that be read and and most of the testimonials.
Hello, good evening. I'm Melissa Wilk, I'm from the class of twenty eighteen. And before I make a closing statement regarding the testimonies, I'd like to say hello. My experience with racism in the Hyland Central School District cannot be boiled down to one one. I have transpired with every business to my right, I have to still have the proper privileges, but even then, some instances will be lucked out because as I realize this, I sustain myself in this town, growing to follow. So much of the racism around me hardly represented as what it was because it was accepted in my lungs. Still, I'm totally clear. Me grade, I had a biology teacher who took a calmness of all of them for thirty thirteen-year-olds that there is a science to black people being faster than white people. The exact explanation is gotten lost over time, but the gist is some people are Africans looking to eat and therefore having a prototype predisposed to burning calories and being fat. It's as not supported as it is not supported. The history of African slavery or natural childhood is one of the oldest and most dominant narratives that owes to the Americans and Black people. It was used in American slavery, as it was in British theories about abolition and degeneration of black people. It was used by Nazis on the equivalent and Jesse Owens as a weapon, and also by all Americans that went to success attracted women. There was being taught in our classroom for white kids who already knew what the origin of racism was, racism is a black theory. In ninth grade, when protests were in the news, I had a history class taught by white teachers who were more interested in speaking about football with white boys and entertaining my questions about being a black student. Many students were tired of being in their class. My teachers would open the discussion, letting them consume ten minutes of class time and allowing white students to make ignorant racist remarks about black people and violence against them. Even though the teachers said this was a learning model about current events, they never corrected or objected on the unborn anti-black statements coming from their students. Sometimes they espoused them. Being half-black and having naturally a color pair, I had multiple teachers on countless occasions telling me that I looked like I stuck my finger in a socket or that I was crazy. I was compared to a sheep and a dog. I told myself it was in my head at the time. But students of color were constantly identified as problem students of groups. Even if their behavior wasn't any different than white kids, they were deemed toxic, destructive, disruptive, or abusive. Racism from student to student is everywhere. White kids said any and all variations of the N-word and specifically targeted black students. Any person of any color or race, I could raise a stool at least once, if not four times during the year. When I was on the drafting, white kids called black teammates African women instructors to better control someone passing cars and when we met this color, people ended up throwing up and drooling. I could go on, but it gets painful, so I hope to get the point. After hearing all these testimonies, we hope for new reactions to it. Of course, racism isn't the means of Hyland's identity, not the board, nor the faculty, staff, and our schools at Hyland, or guilty of anything found with our name. This is an underlying issue in the broader culture in this town. This is an underlying issue in the broader culture in this town as it is the rest of the country. However, our schools have a special ability to address this issue. Though education does start home and it should continue there, it is not enough for the Highland Central School District to hope that all its students are doing what they can to raise anti-racist students. It's also not enough to trust in any teacher's best intentions not to raise racism. Racism, and how it's felt by minorities students in Highland, have yourself. It can be covert, it can be practically invisible if you're not willing to correct it. Still, these minor fractures that many students can do more wise and sometimes inflict results that can affect them, are part of education in this town and the month. There is a local environment and a rural environment that quietly alienates and psychos. This is why doing all that in the New York State Department of Education requires in the district is enough. This issue must be prioritized, but in communication with outreach policies beyond the state limits. Extra fair action is very necessary progress. We need to value the experiences of families of color who can bring light to our decision effects, because this is something as personal as it is substantial. At the same time, we should be proactive. What I want to feedback in New York students of color and their families is not an acceptable way to go about fixing all of our district's shortcomings. Our assets are open and structured and we acknowledge that there are ways to do better for all of our students, and the work that we do will commit itself to this mission. Commitment to minorities students serves as leading action, which is outlined in our class, but it does not separate it. This conversation and this attention to students of color is something that should continue for millions and years to come if the district is invested in this and is involved with
Good evening. My name is Farrah Ward, and I am a parent of one student. She was part of the class of 2017. She is currently a rising senior at State University. And I am also a parent of a current rising freshman here in the Highland Central School District who is nervous about me being here because she's nervous that she may be treated a certain way when she gets to high school based upon statements that I will make here. And that's her being a very hard worker, one of the top students in her class, coming to high school with three high school credits and a 100 average. She's nervous about how she will be treated based on me speaking here. At school, she's often referred to as the whitest black girl that anyone's ever met. The whitest black girl, why? Because she's intelligent? Because she speaks well? Because she works hard? Because she's respectful? That makes her the whitest black girl? No. That makes her a young black queen who needs to be represented? My son was successful here in this high school. He did well in class. He was a star athlete. He currently plays baseball at a Division One university. He too dealt with many issues during his time here at the high school. Some things that he won't even share with me that he's just starting to share with me now because he says, if I would have told you this when I was in high school, Mom, it would have... One instance in particular, when he was a sophomore and he sat in their science class, I had to come pick him up for a dentist appointment. At that point, the secretary called the class and asked the teacher to please send Isaiah to the office. The secretary then listened to the response on the other end and did a "huh huh huh huh" So I wanted to know, what was the "huh huh huh huh"? What's so funny? Secretary was not laughing as it was funny. She was uncomfortable with whatever was stated on the other line. So when we sat in the car driving to the dentist, I said to my son, what did your teacher say when the secretary called the room? He said, "Oh, are the police here for him?" Are the police here for him? Is it this student who comes to school every day, who does his work, who plays on free varsity athletic teams, who is kind, respectful, upstanding citizen? And that's the response that he got. And now I know that there's privacy that's carried out with employees, but that's if he was here for the rest of the year. My son had a quick take in our science, had to get put into a chemistry class, two months into his school year, had to miss out on those labs, and you know, he was already fallen behind. He's not my order with a 100 average. He works hard for an 87, 88 average. So to go two months late into a chemistry class was unacceptable. He was punished for what the teacher said. I could go on and on and on, but you've already heard from these students, you already heard their plea, you already heard that. The other thing I am, besides a parent, is I am going into my 20th year as an educational professional. I have taught history for the last 20 years. For the last 11 years, I have served as the social studies department chairperson in my district. I know the social studies curriculum, and I am here to help if you need it or if you want it. I taught AP European History. I know how that goes. I taught it for one year when I went to my district and said, "Oh, no, we will not be teaching this curriculum anymore." The following year, we've replaced it with AP World History, but we've been having that from now on. This is one of the last school districts in this part of New York State that teaches AP European History for a number of reasons. One, we have to look at the needs of our students. AP European History does not serve our students. These students here speak about how Highland is not diverse, and many of them graduated with my son. And so I have this statistics, and I would say that they are pretty correct, that what they experienced was a not very diverse Highland. I remember when my son started in Highland in third grade, there were about four students in the entire grade who were not white. But by the time, so I'm looking here, in 2006, 2007, when he started here, there was only 16% of a diverse student population at Highland. Based on figures from the New York State Report Card, in 2018, 2019, almost one-third of your student population is either black, Hispanic, Asian, or multiracial. That means we need to change. It's not fair that those students don't get to learn about themselves, their rich history. They get to hear that they were slaves. They were not slaves. They were kings. They were queens. They were doctors. They were great people. We are great people. And we get to hear that we're slaves. It's just not right. If you guys need help like me and you would like some support, I am here to offer it. Like I said, you know, I'm very versed in those curriculums. I'm very versed in all of the social studies curriculums from seven through 12. I will tell you that I sat with Coach Mayo and talked about lesson ideas when my son was in his class. Right? He was always open to that. I don't have a problem coming and helping out. Not only that, besides the AP European class being out of date and what our students need, it doesn't even line up with the Global Regions Exam. We're really talking at a different level. We need that as something that makes you say, this is not what we should be doing? And I'm going to tell you, it not only doesn't line up for it, but I've tutored people in this room, or children of people in this room, when it's time to take the Global Regions because they've taken the AP Euro and they're not ready for the Global Regions because they haven't learned the global part of the regions. It just needs to be done for that reason alone, besides the fact that you have, like I said, 31% of your student population coming up who wants to learn about themselves. And on the last note, you know, there's so much I can do to help. My sister is the dean of diversity at NYU Tisch School. She also has a consulting company where she's hired by universities like Columbia, the New School, UVR. She works with many corporations. This is the work she does. This is what she lives and reads. Everyone right now is recognizing the need for change, and as overwhelmed as she is with all the requests that are coming in, as much as she loves her niece and her niece's friends and all of that, I'm sure that she would be willing to offer it here if you guys needed that. So again, my name is Farrah Ward. If you want to reach out to me, my email is at TiffanyWard@gmail.com, or you can give me a call at 845-705-6141.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Omandi, and I have two students in the Highland Central District. My youngest is going into fifth grade, and my oldest is coming to high school and about to be in the conference of passes and terrified. Terrified to send her here because that parent comment you heard already was mine, and I know she already had issues. My daughter happens to be one of the darkest children in the district. I'm dark. Her father's straight from Africa, Kenya, so she has beautiful, beautiful dark skin, and she doesn't know it because she sees little like her. People tease her about it and scare her. She's an absolute scholar. She's already picked her college at 13. Diversity is such a big thing. She's mom, this diverse low, not going for now anymore, they're not doing a good job. Black, white, and Latinx, all the grown vibes, Latinx, very studious. But I'm scared to send her here, and I was at the protest, and I actually spoke at the protest. My baby girl is a stone. You don't really know her feeling when she's a stone. She comes to school, she takes it, you know, she'll speak up when she needs to. And I looked over, and during one of the children's presentations, she was vomiting. My stone was vomiting. And I went over and consulted her, and as we walked to the car, she said, "Mom, what Kayla said hit me different." And you know what I knew at that moment? As much as we talk about the things that go on in school, what I knew, were there was things that she hasn't told me yet. When she said that Kayla's presentation didn't hurt her different, I knew that there were things she didn't say. I've been asked as a taxpayer for buses, I think, three years in a row, three years in a row. The things that dean proposed, you ask me for money, I'm going to give it to you. Those are things we need to see in the district. We have studious, studious, brown children in our district, brown children that are going to be brilliant. My daughter has said I'm being a surgeon. She studies already. She dances, people are ready. And we have to do better. We have to do better. I too, as an educator, it's been for my 19th year. I'm only a second grade educator here, so I can't offer what my friend Farrah Ward offers, but I can offer to sit on anything that you need to as a parent, as a liaison. My name again is Danielle Omandi. My email address is D O M O N D I at gmail... Oh, actually, I'm sorry. It's D Marie, so D M A R I E O M O N D I at gmail dot com, and my number is 914-213-9386. And I hope to see some things in September implemented so as a parent of students of color, I don't have to be scared. My daughter's strong, but I also know she's fragile, and I don't want anything to get in the way of her dreams. I want her to see all of her dreams through. I don't want, you know, because people think they're inferior, for her to feel like she needs to do less.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Swinton before. I actually did not know about this until early this evening. Somebody said the students were speaking, so I just came here to support them. After hearing them, I did want to get up and make a quick point. One of them is that, if you may remember me, I've been to meetings before. I came to the search committee meeting when they were looking for the superintendent. I've been to Board of Education, and I've had the same thing that I say all the time. We need staff of color. That my child, and she resigned, I'm standing up here, but my child is going into ninth grade and has never had a teacher that looks like her. That, to me, in 2020, that's not acceptable. The other thing I wanted to point out is that I work in the area of, I handle harassment and discrimination cases for a large company. And one of the things that we teach our managers and our leaders is that, once you know there's a problem, you're on notice and you are obligated to take action. So I think what the students have done today is they have put the Board of Education on notice that there is a problem, and I believe that you are obligated to take some type of action. So I am very interested to see what follows this. Do we have action? Or do we have, like I said, put nothing against the professionals that you hire, but I come every year and yet you show a couple of people that you hired, and there's still a lack of diversity. So like Farrah, like the other people spoke, I am willing to help. Like I said, right now, I handle discrimination and harassment for a major company. I've worked in the area of diversity for IBM and for another larger employer, and I was a permanent bachelor officer for Purchase College. So I get at the dean, I did corporate America, and I am more than willing to do anything and provide any assistance and support that you really need. I'm not going to put all my information out. I'll send an email to the Assistant Superintendent Superintendent that contains that information.
My name is Shawnee Perkins. I too have attended several Board of Education meetings and said nothing. I've watched and listened as a parent. I too am an educator. I've been an educator for over 16 years. I've worked in nearby districts that is very similar to Highland. I am the only African-American teacher in my school and have been the only one in the elementary schools in nearby districts for over 16 years. Why I stay here is because I also need to study. So I know how people feel for a predominantly white school and be understood for many reasons. I still struggle every day on a daily basis as I go to work. Why do I work in places that use me as being seen? That does not even take the time to see the importance of diversity education? That does not take the time to see how our world has changed on so many different levels? That impacts so many different people based on cultural inclusiveness? I see the same thing here. I'm a parent of two girls that currently attend Highland Central School District. One is in the seventh grade, one is in the second grade. This year, I've had my own experiences that reminded me and triggered me of what happened to me when I was here. My seventh grader has experienced people talking about her hair this year. So they kind of talked about her skin color to a degree where she was forcing herself to vomit and said, "Please, Mom, let them know what was going on," because that comes with anxiety, probably what you know, that people didn't like her because of the color of her skin. How do I, as a parent, as one that knows that she might mind because I too have experienced it, come to a school where many people don't look like me and explain what is happening to my child and then feel as if they're going to really help, they're really care, they're really showing to my child? I'm telling you, as a parent and as educator, it's hard. It's very hard. It's actually disgusting. I sat here and listened to every one's testimonials, and I know there's many more. I know some of the Highland Central School District students because some of the two students in particular were my babysitters, and they have shared with me countless occasions, given they're pregnant now, that have happened in a Highland. Before my kids even came here, I was afraid of them. So I understand what that other parent was saying. I just feel like at this point in time, this is ridiculous. Ridiculous. I refuse to be another Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, Marcus Sargent, all these phenomenal civil rights leaders in here to complain. Ridiculous. They all said how they feel. We need to do something about it. People are offering help. They're giving you solutions. They're telling you what to do. Do something about it. I'm tired of the pandering, the pandering, the patching it up with a band-aid. Do something about it. People are saying stuff. They're giving out this. Don't think I'm only saying this to Highland because, trust me, in my nearby district, I'm feeling the same way. I've already vocalized it. I've been saying it in the news. I'm educating people. I'm learning and I'm trying to keep my cool because it is becoming ridiculous. So I hope that you really listen to what was said. I don't think it's changing. I don't think a band-aid is going to satisfy this. I think real change has to happen now. Education is changing whether you like it or not. Our world is changing whether you like it or not. Our world is changing whether you like it or not. So if you want to deal with the new norm, make sure you're prepared because it's coming. And it's not going to be just with us older generation. We might be kicked out. This new generation is not happy and I'm proud of them, I'm happy for them. I'm glad you're not going to be disappointed. I'm willing, as a parent and even as an educator, to help in any way that I can. My name again is Shawnee Kirkman. My cell phone number is eight four five five nine nine zero eight eight eight. You can reach me at S N E W K at hotmail dot com. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Christina Ramos. I'm a mother of three children, I'm currently a teacher. I've been in this community for fifteen years now and have been a substitute teacher within this district for well over five years. And you've heard testimonials. Some of those testimonies are my children. So to say that this is an emotional topic for me is an understatement. I have seen hires time and time again, year after year, I've interviewed within this district. And they all lack melanin. They all lack culture. They all lack any kind of sense of food to what some of these students have spoken on today. I've heard Mrs. Elie Bummet what he said and what he prepares to do this summer. I wish that when I came to you, Mr. Von Joplin, in November of two thousand nineteen, that when I spoke to you, Mr. Von Joplin, about these topics, when I told you that I am a substitute teacher that has seen the insides of this district and I told you that there was a problem, I wish you had taken action then. We wouldn't be here. But I'm okay, I am glad that we are. Because now you've heard it from the ones that are supposed to matter most. Do something about it now.
Good evening, I'm at the School of Superior Education. I'm a volunteer, I appreciate the work that you do, administration, staff and community at large. My name is Christina Osborne, I've been a teacher in the middle school for twenty years. I'm here in support of alumni who study about the brave and vicious and emotional undertaking to expose some discrepancies in our schools and help Hyland move forward to attainable and fair goals in racial inequity. While the road may be bumpy, I'm certain that we can focus and keep focusing on creating opportunity, conversation and action that will create a just and fair education for our entire population. Racial inequity in our faculty and administration is an area that is out of bounds here. While it may have been oversly in the past, I hope now as we raise awareness that we will represent our entire population moving forward. This message may seem subtle, but studies prove creating a simple and easy shift will change our outlooks, our connections and hopefully work to heal decades of discrimination and begin to level up the playing field for our students. We need to be certain that Hyland is a safe and welcoming and helpful place and opportunity of employment too. I appreciate your dedication and excellence and making great time. And I look forward to being a part of the change that will hopefully make us all feel must be proud.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Uh, I want to, I want to thank everyone who's coming out this evening. I know it's probably hard to do. Just looking at the reaction from some of our board members, I think every one of us are seriously considering all the recommendations that you've made. I feel that, uh, we will, again, like I said earlier, everybody has to digest what was presented to us through the testimonials that we've come here and the parents have spoken at the end. Uh, it'll take a little bit for us to digest everything here, come together and have an open discussion and try to move forward from here to Hyland. Again, I think it was well put together. I, uh, crabbed away or approved, I'm correct, or guest students, not exit, guest students. Uh, it says something about the educational project, uh, process in Hyland. I think you guys are all caught up to express your opinion. Uh, you're doing it here, I see someone shaking their head. I, I think the
My parents are equally so.
I think the background that you're able to get from Hyland Central School District enables you to move on to higher education. I firmly believe that. Otherwise, those higher education institutions are not kicked to move forward. So I think it's based on your hard work and some of the, the background that you got from Hyland.
And my white privilege.
I would say, I want to say that education is
Excuse, excuse, hold on, hold on, hold on. I asked if anyone else had comments. Please come to the microphone and express your opinion. We're not going to do this after any.
Sorry, I apologize, I was in there, but I just want to say, I think
Your name, please.
Hannah Pearson. Um, I graduated from working. Um, I just wanted to say, I think a lot of students, or most students for those the education industry after Hyland that allowed them to speak out this way and know they were speaking out. The direct thing that they're asking for is for that to become part of the education. Thank you.
Okay, um, board have any comments?
I'm old. I graduated a long time ago. Uh, I'm old. Uh, I graduated a long time ago. And I am so upset at what I've read. I find it so upsetting that the emerald still means the Confederate flag is freely shown in the district. Uh, I, I'm old and I always find that as a symbol of oppression and maybe there's some constitutional issues going on here. But, uh, it's to me, if I were even a white person, I am a white person, but even if I was anyone else, I would find, I find that intimidating. If I see a big truck coming up into a parking lot and I see the Confederate flag, I'm intimidated. There's a message there. I, I find it incredibly bad interracial relationships, same sect relationships, comments about, uh, people's food, parent, religion, whether they're Jew or Muslim, um, gang members, murderers, terrorists, illegals. The point, I cannot believe this happens. But someone said that they're a product of how their parents are teaching them. That's, that to me is on the other side. These kids are a product of what their parents are teaching them. It's up to this district to turn that around, or at least to try to turn it around. Another one of the dumb gals, uh, said that she was wishing that we would have done something to celebrate, uh, so agree. Uh, even before Mr. Von Joplin was the superintendent, we were talking to Democrats about hiring people of different ethnicities. And here we are, we've come here about four years and, um, nothing's changed. But I, I tell you, the job that you all did tonight, you're going to make change. You're, you're making change. You're, you're picking us in the pants and you will see this change.
Thanks, Sue. Because I, I did want to share with the group, first of all, I thank you for your courage. Uh, we will take the information tonight and clearly there's, uh, some serious topics that we need to discuss with the administration moving forward. But one of the frustrations that we do have and that we have talked about was attracting employees of color. So if you have, um, people that you know and that are moving into the education arena and are going to be certified teachers in the next year, two, three or four, please encourage them to apply, we'll start there. Thank you.
I just, I just want to say, so I'm going to get through this. So I'm, I'm very disgusted tonight, um, what I heard. I have two sons in this district. I'm an educator, I'm a principal at a middle school. I grew up in the South. And I didn't come here to New York to have my kids experience this experience. And I'm concerned that my children have gone through this and don't say it makes me because they are stones. And I've been at work for two years and I've made comments like this to you all. And I'm happy that these graduates and families came out today. Maybe you can make a change, but it's just very upsetting. I think that this is to be my kid, to make more of a testimonial. And I'm sorry that it's emotional. And I can do it all. But it hurts my heart. These kids might do this. Either kids will go do this and we don't make a change. So waiting until August for a meeting, I don't have time to process this. Again, I grew up in the South. I came to the more, even more professors, but here it is again. We need to talk after this meeting, set a date, set a time. And I've told before, I didn't want to have to disturb my district. But this is, this is, I've been hard for the kids. But that is enough. Okay.
I know we've all been through a lot. We will, as a board, as a whole, we will work together and make some change in this district. As, as your president, the elect you this evening, I will make it my, as my mission this year. But I'm going to say this, this is going to be my last year as president. Finally decided that that's the route I want to take. I will make it my mission this year to get this board to work hard and make some change. So I appreciate your comments, I really do. I, I have background of, of nephews that are of color and I understand what everybody does. I really do. We will make that, that change, absolutely. I do want to thank everyone for coming. I really sincerely appreciate everybody encouraging to speak out. I'm going to tell you, so all of them, as uncomfortable as they are, they need to be very, and I'm glad you came to tell them this. And I'm glad you showed patience about what you're telling them. I believe, I want to meet sooner than, you obviously, talk about getting these, these, uh, this role. I think there are one suggestions, I think we should embrace it, I think we should also see how we can do that as quickly as possible. I also want to go further and say, we should look at the COVID pandemic and look at closer regarding what, exactly, our losses regarding, uh, hate speech and hate symbols, I think, word. Because it really does bother me that here we are in the state of New York, in Hyland, New York, and Mississippi, this entire flag that has such hate included. And NASCAR, this entire flag that has such racist connotations for it. And we're allowing students to parade around as if it's a sign of free speech and not a sign of hate that they really have to be. I have a good feeling that, I don't see it possible. I know we, we've gotten some, um, parents that spoke tonight and volunteered where service has helped out. I would ask, um, Ms. Gobb, if you can organize one or two members of your group, if you're a large committee, I think that would be done so soon. I think we don't want, my experience with large committees are not redundant. So if you can bring forward one or two, and I know you guys are going back to school shortly, uh, those that can be available. And even if it's, you know, one or two, like an alternate, I would appreciate that. Right, before we just firm up too much, but I really think we need to meet as a board and administration and digest everything we received. Motion to go in executive session. We have a motion for an executive session.
No, no, okay, my name is, I just called last night to say, I don't remember what I'm going to say, but I want to just acknowledge what you had said about, you know, more diverse teachers. I would like to add that my aunt Tina Ramos is a Hispanic speaking woman. And I know personally that she has applied for a Spanish teaching job here multiple times. And I'd like to add that I only had one teacher who was actually Hispanic teaching Spanish. Um, the rest have been white people teaching me Spanish. So I'd like to add that she has been here and been a person of meaning for multiple years and she has not been acknowledged fully as a brilliant woman who would like to teach her culture here. So I would just like to take that into perspective because she has been here the entire time and has applied multiple times for a Spanish job here and has been declined. But yet there's always white teachers, white teachings to the Spanish. And let me add, not correctly, because I am a Spanish, a Hispanic world. Let me add that, that we are not being taught correctly Spanish. So I would just like to add that in there. So thank you for your time and for just coming on.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Mina, I'm a girl who's been in the class of twenty sixteen. I just wanted to point out that I find it kind of outrageous that you as a whole represent this school, correct? That after one person called the word, took it personally, that ended up helping me to apologize to that person directly, but not as the people who have written and read the testimonials to you as a whole. So I believe the school leadership itself and those who have felt victimized should deserve the apology as well as people who personally feel offended. I feel not hurt any apology to the people who have read their testimonials. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, this is full of public comment. I need a motion to go in executive session for contract discussion. With a motion made by Mike Second. All favorites, uh, both, so there, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.